Jim Arrock.
This meeting is being recorded.
There we go. Marty Wood is excused. Paul White Scarver and Jim. White Scarver and Jim Arrock are appointed as voting members for this meeting. Also present are Juliette Hodge, town planner, Mike Cherry, zoning enforcement officer, Nancy Woodlock, land use assistant. Tim Ryan, town council liaison is not present. I would also note that Nate Woody, who has resigned from the commission, is present and he wants to make some departing remarks. Without objection, Nate, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Capone. So I appreciate that. As I'm sure everyone knows by now, I did resign from the commission today. Mostly, I actually wanted to thank all of the commissioners who I've worked with over the last few years doing this. One of the things that I think I've learned in the last week is I've been reminded how important it is to thank all the commissioners who put in a lot of hours, a lot of pain, a lot of sweat into trying to do the best job that they can for this town. And I just want to express a little gratitude to them. The last thing I thought would be my last meeting was when I handed the chair over, Mr. Capone. But I'm confident you're in good hands and hopefully Mr. Capone has forgotten where I live so that he won't be able to take his revenge out on me for leaving him in this lurch. But I did just want to say that I felt forced to resign from the commission because of the actions of the town council. I was at an admin committee meeting last night where I witnessed one town councillor openly state that the only reason to choose one nominee over another was there a party affiliation. And I had another town councillor openly state that the reason for voting against the nominee was a social media post that they refused to make public, which I'm sure everyone who is a zoning commissioner can appreciate the joy of making a decision on evidence that they refuse to show to anyone else and put on the record. And, you know, one of the things that this committee has always been really good at is being apolitical. I have never been in a planning zoning commission meeting where I have seen a vote break down on party lines or see inter-party animosity. And the politicization of this commission is something that I just cannot be a part of. And so I apologize to all those commissioners who may rightly feel like I'm leaving them in the lurch. But I'll tell you that for me, this was the only decision that I could make and still feel good with myself at the end of the day. So with that, I will stop talking. My intention is not to make your meeting drag on any longer. Again, thank you for, you know, all the great years. I've enjoyed learning and moving forward with you. Good luck and have a good meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, Nate. And speaking for the current and former commissioners, both present and absent, I want to express our appreciation to you for your years of service and your exemplary leadership of the commission in the time that I've been on the commission. I've learned an awful lot for you, from you and we're gonna, I think, speaking on behalf of all of us, we're going to miss your leadership and we're going to miss your participation. So thank you for everything you've done for the town. Before moving on, I would like to request that anyone who wants to speak this evening, please identify yourself by name. And if you are not a member of the commission or Juliette or Mike or Nancy or another person who is part of town government, I know Naomi is here. Please also state your address for the record. Next item on the agenda is citizens petitions. Is there anyone present who wants to address the commission on any item that is not on the agenda? I will note that the issue of short-term rentals is on the agenda. And anyone wanting to comment on that will have the opportunity to do so at that time. So if there's anyone that wants to speak on or address the commission on another item, now is your opportunity to do so. If there is anyone, please identify yourself and we will allow you to make a presentation.
Tony, I see Paul Mogul's hand up.
Okay, I can't see. Thank you. I would appreciate, Mike, if you help me because I'm I also don't have access to that at this point. So if Paul, if you're, I assume you're here, please please make comments. I don't see.
Just found the way muting, unmuting. I sent Mike a note earlier this evening from a photo I took on the road going over to the meeting place at the back end of the church there. Got my vaccination over there. Seems that early on, when I was part of planning and zoning, we were looking at directional signage for businesses in which the businesses would pay for the directional signage if we were able to put it into the right of way. To send a photo over to Mike. It seems that this regulation has some flexibility. And I would appreciate if Mike would take a chance and forward that to others on the commission.
Oh, where'd you send it? To the zoning office or?
To you, Michael. Just an email. Mike Cherry email.
Okay, you're gonna have to resend it to mj.cherry@comcast?
Okay, I don't have that ability at this point in time.
Okay, I will, I'll shoot you an email so you get the right address and then I will forward that. It'll be if it comes to that address, I've got it all weekend so I can.
Okay, very good. Sorry, I thought I got to you. I saw your your report at the end of the meeting and you were doing drive-bys for for signage. On maybe 117.
It may be one that I've already captured, but I appreciate your help.
This was on Colonel Ledgerd Highway though. Going down towards the high school. Just the other side of the library.
Huh, okay.
Yeah, it's in the right of way and I figured, well, if it's got some flexibility to it, I certainly would put my hand up and say, I'd be happy to pay for signs to direct them to my winery. And I'm sure there's a half a dozen other big businesses in town that would pay the same amount. So just saying that that might be a nice thing to do for the businesses in town. But anyway, please take a look at the email.
Will do. Thank you, Paul.
I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Paul. The next item is approval of the agenda.
Nobody else has their hand up. I can't see everybody at once, so it's.
No, I can't either.
Cobb has her hand up.
Okay, sorry, Jessica. We missed you again.
It's timeout for a second. At the bottom of your screen, there's a reactions button. And if you click it, there's a raise hand function and then I'll be able to see it on the side where I have all of you listed.
Good, that will help.
Okay, go ahead, Jessica.
Hi, Jessica.
Okay, hi, Jessica Cobb, Seven Whopper Will Drive in Gales Ferry. All right, hello, members of Ledgerd's Planning and Zoning Commission and guests. I wanted to come tonight and share some thoughts that are not on tonight's agenda, but I hope you will welcome my comments as Ledgerd resident. I've been watching the appointment process for the vacancy on the, as the for the alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I hope that it will be resolved soon. I can't help but think that the gatekeeping around the fulfillment of that seat is the attempt to and the attempt to fill it with a member of the Republican Party is an attempt to stack the votes needed to opt Ledgerd out of the requirement set forth in HB 606107, Public Act 21-29. While I don't know any of the current members or the proposed members' opinions on that particular bill, the push to provide affordable housing tends to be opposed by Republicans. I hope that Ledger does not opt out of these requirements. Now we're in the future. On a different matter, I know that there was recently a presentation of a proposal by a company interested in buying and developing the old Dow plant. I don't want to express an opinion on that part plan in particular, but I like the idea of that property being developed in a way that brings jobs to Ledgerd and that expands our tax base. If there is an opportunity for the public to sway the owners to use that land in a way that benefits the town, I hope to help out in that effort and I hope that the Planning and Zoning Commission can do what it can to facilitate that as well. And that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. I wish to apologize to Jessica. She did send me an email on the Dow Chemical project. I have been spending the past couple of days trying to get ready for this meeting. And I apologize for not responding, but we agree. We, that is in the very early stages. We certainly want to see something done with that land. The town does. We would like to get on the tax rolls. And as, as if this project proceeds, there certainly will be opportunity for public input. So thank you again. And again, my apologies for not getting back to you sooner. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the commission on matters that are not on the agenda? Okay, now I think we're good. The next item is approval of additions and/or changes to the order of the agenda. Juliette, we do have changes and additions. Is that correct?
It's not so much, well, it could be a change. It's a technical issue. On your agenda, you have an 824 review. That is still on there. It's, it's something that doesn't actually require an 824 review per statute. I did review the town charter and the, you know, the bond council rules and whatnot. And they like to send certain things to the planning and zoning for a report, assuming it's a 24. This doesn't qualify as an 824. I don't think it's gonna harm you necessarily to give a report on this, but it should have, it shouldn't be called 824. So it should just be called a, you know, referral or a report, something to that effect.
That's a, that's a minor technical change, though I don't, I'm not concerned about that. Are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? That you have?
I do not.
I believe we have, we will have some additional exhibits at some point. Is that correct?
Yes, that'll be introduced when we open that public hearing.
Okay. Saying that there are no, and to go back, I have a little cheat sheet here apologizing, folks. Saying that there are no other changes without objection, the agenda and all attachments and the exhibits therein are made part of the official record. We will now move on to, I want to cancel this thing now, excuse me. Well, now move on to the next item, which is pre-application reviews. The first item is A, it's a pre-application discussion, five Lorenz Industrial Parkway, one lot resubdivision. Peter Gardner is presenting. Peter, are you here? Trying to find.
He's here. He's gonna need to unmute.
Okay.
Peter, go, Peter. Take your mouse and hover over the lower left-hand corner of your screen and hit the microphone icon. Please.
Done. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Pete Gardner for the owners of five Lorenz Industrial Parkway. It's a 5.03 acre site in the CIP zone. This is an application for a resubdivision that in accordance with the subdivision regulations, we're doing a preliminary presentation. I don't believe it's a time for any type of discussion because we will be submitting an application and it will be a public hearing because it is a resubdivision. This is the old police station on Lorenz Industrial Parkway. And as I said, I don't see, I don't see how there's any room for any type of discussion with this preliminary review.
Just for the record, this is in your subdivision regs that you have, that you shall have a preliminary review of all subdivisions, resubdivisions. Probably wasn't intended for such a minor subdivision, but.
And thank you to any of the members of the commission having questions for Mr. Gardner on this one. Then moving on, we've got item B. This is another pre-application.
Item B, again, Peter Gardner is another resubdivision. This 125 Whalehead Road, a 3.35 acres parcel land in an R40 zone. And the proposal is to take the property and create a new building lot. And as with the first application I presented, it's a resubdivision and we will be submitting an application and it will be a public hearing on this application.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Gardner on this or does staff have any comments on this at this point?
Just a real quick one for Pete and Mark. Mark, you're in front of Wetlands for the existing lot. Are you gonna try and put this in on that same application, modify the application or do it separately?
Mike is asking if you're gonna modify your existing application before Wetlands for this application or submit a separate application? Separate application.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tur.
Mark's application has already been reviewed by Wetlands. We're waiting the 30 days, you know, period. But this is unrelated. He would have to come in for another maybe another application for an upland review area, review. But no issues with it, you know, a quick review.
Should be, yeah.
Well, thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time and it's too bad Nate left and I.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. 125 Whale, this is Commissioner Boudreau. 125 Whalehead. The, as you come in off Whalehead, the first trailer on the right originally had its septic system on the property on the other side of the wall, not part of the property in question. When that property was purchased, the root, the deal was that that septic system was going to be moved. When it was resold, it hadn't been moved yet. And I think Jean Wright owned it and she said that it was fixed, but I would like to have a little more assurance of that.
She's deceased.
And she has passed on.
This is the approximate location of the septic system is shown.
No, 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 it's on the other side of that stone wall. You see, all this property belonged to my parents. And they sold this piece separately. The septic system, put your puck up there again and try. It's on the other side of the stone wall. No, for other side of the wall. Yes, you got it. So I just wanted to make sure that was taken care of.
Peter, do you have a comment?
I can't understand you. Having trouble seeing this.
Peter, did you have a comment on that or no?
If there's concern, we will look into it.
Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome. And thanks, I heard for your time and I'm disappointed Nate left. If it's because of politics, shame on the town of Ledger. I don't want to get into politics, but there's no room for it with this. No room for it here.
Thank you, Peter. Good night. Next item, the major items of business tonight is the public hearing on application PG 21-14 RA. Veric Treister, 10 Huntington Way, Ledger, Connecticut, to amend the zoning regulations to permit hosted short-term rentals as an accessory use in residential districts. This public hearing is continued from 12/9/2021. So I'll open it, reopen it at, if I look at my clock, 7:24 PM. Mr. Treister will present this. Mr. Treister has told Ms. Hodge that he anticipates his presentation will be about 17 minutes. I think the over-under is probably about 20, but we will see. In any case, Mr. Treister, please proceed with your, with your presentation.
Point of order, did you want to read in the exhibits afterwards then?
I, no, yeah, good point. Let's read in Meyer, let's read in the exhibits. We have additional exhibits. I will ask Ms. Hodge to read in the additional exhibits that are not part of the agenda so that they are in the record. Thank you very much. I forgot about that. So I, Juliette, excuse me, out of trouble.
And if you would, I mean, okay, just bear with me. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 letters. So if you would rather that I just say what they are right now and after his presentation, we can read them in as if they were comments?
That is fine with me. If it's fine with the rest of the commission?
Might make sense.
Let's proceed that way.
But so just for the record, we did receive exhibit number 16, a letter of support from Ledgerd resident Mary Graham. A letter or comments from Stephen Brandon, a resident. A letter from Christopher Willis, who's a resident, and a letter from Robert Barnett. A letter from Molly Barnett. A detailed analysis of the proposed regulations for SDRs by Robert Burnett. A comment from, or a letter from Sandy Fedors. Apologies if I pronounced that wrong. A letter from Angela Cassidy. A letter from Kirk Bryson and a letter from Lisa Ann Curtis. So after your presentation is over, I will read those in. And if everybody could mute.
Please, Jeff, you're I think I see Mason is, Mason, if you would mute, please. Or somebody can mute him.
I'm gonna mute him if I can get there.
Are we all set?
I think we're set, Eric.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chairman Capone. Before I begin, I was wondering if you would be willing to confirm who is seated for this application for the record, please?
Seated for the record are myself, Katie Scanlon, Tom Boudreau, Paul White Scarver and Jim Arrock.
Okay, thank you. For the record, this is a, can you hear me all right? Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
For the record, this is a continuation of the public hearing opened on December 9th on application number 21-14 RA for the adoption of zoning regulations that will allow hosted short-term rentals, but prohibit non-hosted short-term rentals. On December 21st, I submitted an amended application, exhibit 12, which incorporates ideas suggested by the administration committee during its December 8th meeting and recommendations Juliette suggested when this hearing opened on December 9th. The amended application was filed with the clerk on December 21st. The proposed amended regulations are intended to become effective on February 28th, which is the day after the town's short-term rental ordinance expires. There are six important changes in the amended application. The first deletes the 16 requirements originally required to be in the short-term rental host guest agreement. Although the 16 requirements were appropriate, they are not critical and their deletion simplifies the regulations. The host guest agreement is still required to be part of an application for a hosted short-term rental. The change means the commission will have more discretion to determine if an applicant's proposed host guest agreement will be adequate to achieve the purpose of the regulations. The change will also make it easier for you to impose conditions of approval. The second change clarifies that traditional land use procedures will be used for enforcement. It also reminds the applicant that you have the authority after a public hearing to revoke a short-term rental special permit. The third change continues to allow a hosted short-term rental in a single-family dwelling, but also now allows a short-term rental in an accessory apartment that is in, attached to, or detached from the single-family dwelling. The fourth change, which is related, continues to allow the primary residence of the host to be his single-family dwelling, but also now allows his primary residence to be in his accessory apartment. The fifth change continues to allow short-term rentals in single-family dwellings in residential districts, but also now allows hosted short-term rentals in single-family dwellings in any district, including in our commercial and design districts. The sixth change is the addition of a specific requirement that a hosted short-term rental must be available to the public. The purpose of this change is to show that the proposed regulations are not applicable when a homeowner allows his friends and relatives, but not the public, to use his home for 30 or fewer days. Some may believe the proposed regulations require the host to be physically present in his home while it is occupied by short-term rental guests. This is not true. The definition of the host is the owner of a short-term rental who occupies his single-family dwelling as his primary residence and is responsible for its occupation and management. The key phrase is occupies as his primary residence. The word occupy does not mean always physically present. There is nothing in the definition or anywhere in the proposed regulations that requires the host to be present 24 hours per day or even in his home while his short-term rental guests are present. The home is only required to be his primary residence or domicile. It is the same policy for B&amp;Bs, country ends, and rooming houses, which have worked well. You might ask, what would happen when the proposed regulations are applied to seasonal rentals that predate the 1963 adoption of zoning? A better question would be, do non-hosted seasonal rentals that predate 1963 constitute short-term rentals as defined in the proposed amended regulations? If the answer is yes, a non-hosted short-term rental is a valid, protected, non-conforming use and would not be subject to the zoning regulations. If the answer is no, non-hosted short-term rentals of 30 or fewer days will not be permitted. However, in such situations, non-hosted seasonal rentals with terms longer than 30 days will continue to be allowed. Our zoning regulations have never listed non-hosted short-term rentals as a permitted use of a single-family dwelling. And under zoning, unless a use is in the use table, it is prohibited. I think everyone will agree that seasonal rentals existed before our zoning regulations were adopted in 1963. As such, it would not be surprising if owners of seasonal rentals appealed a notice of violation or a cease and desist order that they are operating non-hosted short-term rentals and non-compliance with the zoning regulations. However, a short-term rental use today, as defined in the proposed regulations, is almost certainly not protected because due to technology, it is not the same as a seasonal rental use before 1963. A short-term rental is defined in the proposed regulations as the rental of a single-family dwelling to members of the public for 30 or fewer days. This is essentially identical to the definition of transient lodging offered to the public by a hotel, whereas occupants, if they stay for 30 or fewer days, are called guests and subject to Connecticut's in-keeping laws and is occupancy tax. There is no evidence that I'm aware of where before 1963, seasonal rental owners posted their maximum rates in their units, which before 2002 was required by law for transient lodging. I am not aware of seasonal rental owners who, before 1963, kept detailed records of the transactions of their guests, such as vehicle, make, and year, license plate, the day and time of check-in, the day and time of checkout, and payment records, which was also required by law for short-term transient lodging. I am not aware of any evidence that seasonal rentals were normally rented to the public by the day or by the week, but instead, before 1963, were normally rented for more than 30 days, usually to the family and friends of their owners and often to the same family and friends year after year. Before 1963, occupants in seasonal rentals were not called guests, but were called seasonal residents, many of whom received their mail at their seasonal rental. Before 1963, because they typically occupied seasonal rentals for more than 30 days, seasonal residents were not subject to the in-keeping laws applicable to short-term transient lodging, but to the tenant landlord laws. Seasonal residents were generally not subject to Connecticut's occupancy tax, which went into effect in 1959. If there is an appeal, an owner of a seasonal If there is an appeal, an owner of a seasonal rental will be required to show. The zoning board of appeals that his seasonal rental was primarily used as a non-hosted short-term rental. As defined in the proposed regulations. To do so, the owner will have to demonstrate that before nineteen sixty-three. His seasonal home is primarily rented to the public for thirty or fewer days. That his occupants were regularly charged and paid the Connecticut occupancy tax, and that the occupants were called guests. Although unlikely, it is possible that an owner of a seasonal rental might be able to show that the use of his seasonal rental dwelling. Prior to nineteen sixty-three was equivalent to a short-term rental as defined in the proposed regulations. However, that non-conforming use was permanently abandoned if, at any time after nineteen sixty-three. The dwelling was normally occupied for terms longer than thirty days, which would be a conforming use that supersedes the prior non-conforming use. It is true that the burden is on the town to show intentional abandonment, which can be difficult. However, it should be simple for the town to use historic phone books, tax records, payment or non-payment of the short-term occupancy tax. Post office records and DMV records to determine if, after nineteen sixty-three. The same person typically occupied a seasonal rental for more than thirty days. During the hearing on December ninth, it was mentioned that our town attorney and our land use attorney both recommended using a town ordinance. For the regulation of short-term rentals. However, there is nothing in the record that supports the recommendation. And I do not see how an ordinance can be easier to enforce and easier to change than the zoning regulation. As shown by the examples in exhibit seven. Ledger's short-term rental ordinance has failed to protect the peace and quiet of residents living near non-hosted short-term rentals. It is time to try a different approach. Exhibit fourteen identifies in quotes town planners and land use attorneys from Connecticut and around the country. Who have publicly stated that short-term rentals are a land use that should be regulated by zoning. I also understand that some may believe that a ledgered resident who owns two single-family homes in town. Should have the right to reside in one and operate the other as a non-hosted short-term rental. However, allowing a resident who owns two homes in town to operate one as a non-hosted short-term rental. Does not solve the unsolvable problem of non-hosted short-term rentals. Which is that Airbnb sometimes does a lousy job of vetting guests. Without a resident host, there is nothing that can be done to prevent guests from disturbing the neighborhood. All the owner can do after disturbance and after the police are called, is to say to the neighbors that he is sorry. Video cameras in and around a non-hosted short-term rental. Although they may document a disturbance while it is happening, will not prevent the disturbance. Such cameras may be illegal, and it is unrealistic to expect a remote host to properly monitor his cameras. The lack of adequate vetting, combined with no in-person oversight by a remote host. Means that neighbors of a non-hosted short-term rental will always be at risk. I come back to my original question. Would you purchase or lease a single-family dwelling as your primary residence? If it was adjacent to a non-hosted short-term rental? If the answer is no, you should adopt the proposed regulations. Short-term rental guests who intend to party will usually choose a non-hosted short-term rental. Which will prevent most short-term rental problems. In addition, a resident host can remind his guests to behave. At the first sign of a developing problem, and if necessary, can call for help before a problem becomes serious. To the best of my knowledge, there is no history of hosted short-term rentals causing problems in Ledger. Some may believe a single-family dwelling dwelling could be leased or sold to a problematic family that could. Month after month, disturb the peace and quiet of a neighborhood. Which would be worse than the risk of nuisances created by a non-hosted short-term rental. There is a problem with this argument. Most landlords carefully vet their prospective tenants to find and retain problem-free long-term residents. The key words are problem-free and long-term, which are not important to the owners of short-term rentals. With proper vetting, the odds of installing a problem long-term tenant. Such as the tenant from hell and the classic nineteen ninety movie Pacific Heights are almost zero. The combination of proper vetting, having a lease that incorporates strict rules, the tenant landlord laws. And the ability of a landlord to damage a tenant's credit score by eviction for a repeat violation of his rules. Or a repeat violation of the tenant landlord laws dramatically reduces the risk of having a long-term tenant problem. It is unlikely that a properly vetted family who is establishing a new home will disturb the peace and quiet. However, the opposite is true when poorly vetted random groups of two to sixteen strangers. Who are on vacation and in a partying mood, move into a vacant house every weekend. With fifty-two weekends per year, the chance of a non-hosted short-term rental becoming a party house. And creating the types of nuisances listed in exhibit eight is obviously greater than the chance of a problem. Caused by a properly vetted family establishing their new home. In summary. The exhibits show that the town ordinance regulating short-term rentals has failed. The exhibits and public testimony submitted during this hearing to date. Show that the problems created by non-hosted short-term rentals are real and have affected the quality of their neighbors' lives. The exhibits show that many land use attorneys and town planners recommend zoning as the enforcement vehicle. For the regulation of short-term rentals. And most importantly, the exhibits show that hosted short-term rentals have not been a problem. As I stated on December ninth, I know that many of you have enjoyed being a guest in non-hosted short-term rentals. However, I respectfully request that you not evaluate the proposed regulations from the perspective of your experiences. As a guest and non-hosted short-term rentals, but from the perspective of their neighbors. As a reminder, because this is a proposed regulation change. You are required to state your findings on the consistency of the proposed regulations with the plan of conservation and development, which is called the P O C D. Section four dash three on page eighteen of the P O C D quotes a report. From the southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments. Stating that we are facing a serious affordable housing shortage. And that this area will need an additional seven thousand two hundred housing units between twenty fifteen and twenty thirty. As such, the proposed regulations are consistent with section four dash three of the P O C D. Because by prohibiting non-hosted short-term rentals, additional homes become available for permanent residency. This completes my presentation, and I will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna, thank you, Mr. Treister. Uh, here's how I intend to proceed. First of all, I'll ask Ms. Hodge to. Uh, read in the additional exhibits. At that point, we will open. The discussion up to members of the public who wish to comment on this proposal. I, I, I ask you to, um, not be repetitive. Um, yeah, it's not necessary to, uh, to, if you agree with someone else and. You, you wish to say that, that you agree, that is fine. Um, Mr. Treister will be available to respond to questions. I'd like this to be as interactive as process as possible. Uh, after that, the members of the commission will have an opportunity to ask questions. Um, when there is no more discussion, at that point, we will close the hearing and then open it up to a discussion and decision. Uh, is that acceptable to all the members of the commission? Hearing no objection, uh, I'll ask Ms. Hodge to, uh, read in the additional nine exhibits that we have.
Okay, everybody can hear me still.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, this is the letter from Mary Graham seventy-two A Long Pond Road South. Uh, dear Planning and Zoning Commission members. I'm writing to request that you reconsider some of the proposed changes to the short-term rental regulations. As a resident of the Long Pond area over the years, we have had our share of negative short-term rental experiences. I do feel that we can achieve a balance and enjoy the benefit of well-managed short-term rentals. This letter supports Mr. Bob Barnett and his daughter Molly, who together own two short-term rental cottages on Long Pond. With the passage of the temporary ordinance two years ago, the adverse incidents we have experienced have ceased. I have seen many of Mr. Barnett's renters enjoy walking Long Pond Road South. I've witnessed his renters who have their dogs with them. Being careful to clean up after their pet and respectful of personal property around them. Changing the regulations could potentially create a different set of problems. As well, it also seems to be inadvertently punishing those owners who made an effort to comply with. Comply and follow permitting guidelines. My concerns are if the current short-term rental proposed changes make it too restrictive, then the, then. Those properties could be handled as thirty-day rentals or longer, as thirty-day or longer rentals. These then become dealt with as leases, and the owner loses the ability to control adverse situations as effectively. As they could in the short-term rental realm. A thirty-day rental that becomes a week-long party house or frequent weekend parties would not be pleasant. If no one had the ability to stop it. Most of us have lived near a bad long-term renter at some point in our lives. It can be very unpleasant. When regulations went into effect two years ago, Mr. Barnett reached out to his neighbors to inform them of his plans with the transition to a permitting process. He and his daughter work together as a team, and either would be readily reachable if any concerns arose. His situation at the Long Pound Pond Road South property is unique since it. It also has a family cabin for their access to enjoy Long Pond. He went out of his way to explain his personal use of the cabin to assuage neighbors, neighborhood concerns. That he was also renting the place to host big parties. I often drive by those properties and frequently see him or his daughter cleaning the rental or working at the, at the next door cabin or yard. My suggestions are, ledgered retain the one owner, one short-term rental stipulation. The owners may have one representative registered with the town, specifically dedicated only to that one property. Two, the owner or a registered representative must be a resident of, of Ledger, but not restricted to living on the same property as the rental. The owner or registered representative must be available to be on site within twenty minutes. Twenty minutes, which is just about anywhere within Ledger. Implement, um, for implement a mechanism for the owner to provide a butters with accurate contact information. Four, again, it says, but that's really five, implementing the use of security cameras on the property. Would provide an assessment tool for the owner to monitor their property and documentation for the police if an issue should arise. I've utilized short-term rentals several times when traveling, and they offer a unique experience for. A traveler. I also appreciate that Long Pond in the early nineteen hundreds was a summer, it was a short-term summer rental, in quotes, community. People came here for varied amounts of time, and in, and the area also had some permanent residents. I believe that Mr. Barnett and his daughter are making a sincere effort to comply with both the town. And residents' concerns and offer a visit, and offer a visit to our area that goes to the heart of the experience of short-term rentals. Respectfully submitted, Mary Graham. This one is not as long. Number seventeen, from Stephen Brandon. I recently moved back to Ledger after living outside of, outside of Atlanta, Georgia, in an area that attracted a large amount of vacationers year-round to Lake. Lanier, Lanier. We also had short-term rentals in our town, and in fact, also across the street from me. At first, there were some issues with some parties, but then some basic regulations were put in place. And then as enforcement improved, the problems all went away. To the extent that, on average, the short-term rental house was more conforming and less of a nuisance to the neighborhood than the other houses. Not how, non-host, these are bulleted points. Non-hosted houses are not the problem. Party houses are the problem. And as they are not pulling special permits and are non-compliant. With enforcement, that, that should improve. Second bullet point, I support rules and regulations, but please, within reason, non-hosted Airbnbs exist all over the world, and with proper individual house guidelines. They can be run with minimal distractions. The third point, why, why not require external security cameras to facilitate the enforcement of parking and guest limits and noise? Isn't that a simple, easy fix? I don't see how the host. Living in the home would fix any problem that a security camera cannot fix. Stephen Brandon, two zero three Spicer Hill, Spicer Hill Road. Uh, Leonard. Exhibit eighteen is from Chris Willis, Christopher Willis. From thirty-two R Long Pond South. Town of Ledger Planning and Zoning. I was informed that there is, is now consideration of some proposed additional short-term rental regulations. As well as some amendments to the current regulations. I was surprised since I didn't realize there were any problems with the ordinance that was in place for the last two years. I live on Long Pond Road, and in this neighborhood, there are a couple of houses that, that do S T Rs. Years ago, there were a couple instances with party houses, but ever since the S T R ordinance, there have been no problems for me. It's barely even noticeable that S T R is taking place, besides the different colored cars with. It's barely even noticeable that the S T R is even taking place besides the different colored cars in the driveways. Every family or, or couple that I've seen visiting have been high-class, respectful, mature guests. Parentheses, as the S T R properties near me are indeed very nice houses and do not rent cheap, end parentheses. Um, I have no complaints, and I actually think S T R is a great thing for this neighborhood and for the town of Ledger. And that last sentence was in bold. So I would hate to see them gone or replaced with long-term rentals. I think it may be a misconception that adding more rules and regulations will be better for the neighborhoods and those who are simply living nearby and not benefiting from doing S T Rs. Like myself, but in reality, I, I too am benefiting from S, the S T Rs in my neighborhood. There are many reasons why people, that properties on Long Pond have higher resale value than similar properties elsewhere in town, and I think this is one of them. Also, the existing S T R properties have a great incentive to keep improving their houses, and I love that my neighbor's house on forty-six Long Pond Road. Has grown from being a rundown, old-looking house to a now, now be a much more pleasing sight to see. With this diligent upkeep and new gardens, et cetera. I think that house alone. I think that house alone has helped the resale value of my own neighboring house. Short-term rentals are definitely a safer option compared to long-term rentals. I am afraid that the new proposed regulations will cause the S T R near me to, to turn. Into a long-term rental with lower-paying tenants, and the potential of noise and other disruption from that are usually unsolvable. Rather than currently, I have the owner's phone number, and if there's ever a problem, then the owner said she can simply demand that the S T Rs. Demand the S T Rs to leave. Please be cautious when adding new regulations to S T Rs, and keep in mind the alternative that is bound to happen if you over-regulate S T R. And they are forced to change to long-term rentals. Thank you, Christopher Willis. Um, this is from Robert Burnett. Dear Planning, uh, Robert Burnett, I don't have an address here, but. Dear Planning and Zoning Commission, Commissioners. The proposed new regulations might be a good approach to better enforce regulations that were put in the ordinance for the last two years. However, I don't feel it is ready for passage quite yet. Prior to enac, enacting the S T R ordinance two years ago, town council members put in many months. Of research from, with input from six counselors and all sides. Each, and all sides about each aspect of the ordinance. Now zoning is voting on an entirely different regulations devised, basically. Only by basically only one person with zero input from anyone who actually operates an S T R. There are a lot of short-term rental activity in town. Most of them are not party houses. I have been renting online every week for fifteen years. The last time there was a party was many years ago, and that, and that's because I didn't have security cameras back then. Now with basic technology, it's not that hard to monitor my guests. I've had zero-party house problems in recent years, and I could back up these facts with the Z E O and police records and statements from neighbors. But I understand, even if there is only one party house in town, no one wants that house to be next door to them. So come up with some basic regulations. We did that. So enforce those regulations. We did not do that. Let's do that. Let's enforce the regulations that were all well-researched with input from all sides with compromises made in both directions. We can do it. Rather than disallow almost every present and future S T R and their. Present and future S T R and their comma, let's enforce some regulations that allow rentals. But not, but no party houses. Every house that's made an effort to follow the regulations and get a permit had zero-party house complaints. Let's give that a shot. Let's not totally start from square one. Let's not totally start from square one. Let's take the essence of the ledger, short-term rental ordinance, move it over to. To zoning regulations and then give it some teeth. I attended about twenty meetings with the land use committee. Admin committee and town council and meetings with the mayor and planner. I heard over and over again from town counselors and the mayor that we did not, that we did not want to disallow rentals. We just wanted to regulate them. Most ledger residents spoke at hearings or sent. Sorry, most ledger residents do not want to be one of the few towns in Connecticut to, to disallow STRs. Two, two years ago, about fifty residents spoke at hearings or sent emails to allow STRs. And over one hundred residents signed petitions, signed a petition to allow STRs. Tonight's regulations will, for the most part, flat-out disallow them. Yes, there can be some problems with renters, but we as a town could do way better enforcing basic regulation. Nothing is black and white. There are many wonderful benefits of Airbnb and VRBO all over the world and also, and, and in our community also. Consider taking the time to read the reviews on VRBO and Airbnb, read what they wrote about coming on vacation to our town. Has anybody researched the benefits that we will be losing if we pass this regulation without modifications? Has anybody asked if the Economic Development Commission? What economic benefits we will be losing? Not just the economic benefits just for the STR owners, but for the whole town and the tax benefits to both the town and the state. And don't we all want the values of our homes to increase and lower taxes? Please make an educated choice. Pre, please either bring over the well-researched. Clauses from our current ordinance over to zoning so they have better enforcement. Or if you do want to make a drastic, make drastic changes to the regulations, please research them first. Please research them first. Thank you for your time, Robert Burnett. This looks. This is pretty similar to the last one. It's from Molly Burnett. Planning zoning committee, I'm very disappointed that Ledger is proposing and possibly deciding to essentially disallow almost all vacation houses in town. Rather than making an effort to enforce the existing regulations from hosted and non-hosted rentals. I see that there are some complaints about the two or three houses in town that have large groups. I've seen one or two houses in town and the internet advertising in bold, in uppercase letters. To bring your party here, there. They obviously don't feel they have any incentive to comply with any. Uppercase of our regulations to curb party houses. I doubt that they even have an STR permit. These houses who don't even bother to get a permit and comply with the rules and regulations. These party houses are the problem in town and are the source of the residents' complaints. I would, I wouldn't want to hear loud music at three AM. Each weekend either. I think the town has learned their lesson and that there needs to be fines in place. To encourage following the, the regulations. I support adding any and all of the enforcement to the STR regulations. But I also see that there are now totally new regulations being voted on tonight, which will covertly disallow almost every. House in town that would like to do rentals or VRBO or Airbnb by banning non-hosted STRs. Is that really needed? I see a reason for the new regulations to disallow non-hosted rentals. Is because otherwise, there is no way to know if the rentals are having a party or creating a neighborhood problem. Really? How dated is this logic? Did you consider requiring cam, a security camera? For thirty dollars on Amazon.com, takes ten to twenty minute, yeah, ten to twenty minutes to set up. And for seven dollars a month, there can be a thirty-day history of all recordings. And alerts in real-time for various activities. Hosts can easily check in to see. How many cars and guests enter the home? To prevent and monitor the problem and they can ask them to leave if need be. The town would also be able to request the footage to verify any complaints if needed and this could be. Could even be in a way to prove which houses are. Which houses are disobeying the ordinance. And then you can find the owners or take away their permit to stop problematic rentals. Exhibit eleven states that another reason for this regulation is that it decreases property values. That's funny because communities everywhere else are finding that it increases property values. Stonington asked for input from the Economic Development Commission. Has Ledger done that? If the reasoning for the regulation is erroneous, then I think both the reasoning and the regulation should be modified. Not necessarily thrown out altogether, but modified to make sense. My father has been doing vacation rental at his cottage on Long Pond for over fifteen years and there have barely been any issues. And definitely since the ordinance began, there have been no parties or nuisances reported there, other than a few complaints about our own family visiting. As one neighbor has falsely mistaken our own family gatherings as large, as large rental groups. I now own the cottage at forty-six Long Pond Road and I requested a list of all complaints made regarding my property and I only received one letter. From Pam Bartlett. Who detailed several complaints about my property used by my own family and friends intentionally or mistakenly calling us renters. I can provide proof of each of her complaints being about myself or my father or my younger brother and his friends, if you don't believe me. So please don't let her complaints ban us from renting our cottages on Long Pond after we've made tremendous efforts and spent thousands of dollars in order to comply with the STR ordinance. Passed two years ago. If non-hosted STRs are banned, we will be forced to transition to long-term rentals for the summer or month. By month. High-class, respectful vacationing families would be replaced with young professionals looking for a sweet spot to party all summer. And invite all their friends to party at Long Pond. Since there are no guest limits or rules for long-term. Rentals. And why would we have the legal right to control their friends and we would have no legal right to control their friends and parties? Why risk that scenario? In summary, I support the STR regulations and even further regulations are fine within reason. I understand there have been resident complaints directed towards problematic STR properties, properties that are not following the rules. Or even getting a permit in many cases. This has led to the proposed amendments being considered tonight. How adding more rules and banning non-hosted STR solve the problem of people not following the rules? Won't this only punish those who have been pulling the permits and following the ordinance? Uh, like my father and myself? Why not first simply enforce the existing rules that many towns members spent countless hours researching to devise? Adding enforcement may be the easiest, most effective approach to stopping problems with STR. And keeping all the benefits they bring residents in the town. All right, what was that, number twenty? Did we already read this one? Is there two from Robert Burnett?
Yes, there are.
Uh, exhibit twenty is again from Robert Burnett. First, most STRs and Ledger are, are non-hosted rentals. Mr. Treister's proposal is essentially a complete ban on the vast majority of present and future STRs. Regardless of how quiet they are or regardless of how well they fit into the neighborhood. And how much the neighbors like the STRs in their neighborhood. There are too many things in Mr. Treister's proposals, proposal that do not make sense. For example, by definition, a non-hosted STR would be a principal use of a dwelling, not an accessory use. Okay, let's think about this. According to his proposal, if a family rents a house for less than thirty days, it would be. A principal use. But suddenly, if they rent the house for thirty-one days, it magically becomes an accessory use. Or is anybody going to be allowed? Sorry, I'm just gonna make some notes. Is anyone gonna? Or is anyone going to be allowed to rent out their house anymore, month to month or year to year without being there at all times to host them? And long-term rentals are allowed. Is that an accessory use or a principal use? And some clauses look to be purposely designed for failure. For example, the simple clause in the requirement three, the host must be reachable at all times. By his guests, the zoning enforcement officials, fire department and the police department. What if I'm in the bathroom for five minutes and I leave my phone in the kitchen? What if I'm constipated? And I'm in the bathroom for twenty minutes. A similar clause. Written by our own town counselors says that the host or representative must be reachable within two hours, reasonable. Requirement four seems to discriminate against lower-income people. I am not a lawyer, but it doesn't seem fair. Requirement six says parking on non-paved areas is not permitted. Does that mean if somebody has a beautiful landscape stone driveway that you can't park in it? Hotel guest agreement requirements. Three says that it prohibits many breeds of dogs. I'm wondering if. Uh, Mr. Barnett had the right version in front of him when he was reading this because it, that's been changed since then.
Um, yes, I think I had an older version, sorry.
Do you want me to continue reading this?
You could skip over that paragraph.
All right, so the dog issue has gone away. The sixteen host guest agreement and, and I think the paving thing went away too.
Correct.
This, the sixteen host guest agreement requires that the twenty-one rules and. Policies are really quite excessive. Uh, we, we've gotten rid of a lot of those too. Uh, for example, it's really the town of Ledger's jurisdiction to require that the host write down a list of, on a list. Of amenities that a guest is allowed to use, a TV, the bed, the linens, and the furniture, et cetera. I don't think that's the case, but. It's really necessary to post on the bedroom wall. Okay, we've taken all of these out.
Okay.
Would you agree?
Yeah. Yes.
And the application materials require six different inspections. I don't think that's true either. Um, all these regulations are really trying to address parties and noise and parking. Or are these regulations a complete ban on most STRs and disguised, uh, and a disguised smothering of the rest? Standards for granting a special permit, one, this STR will not constitute a risk to future property values. First, it seems really subjective to enforce. Second, why doesn't this need to be in there if there's absolutely no evidence that STRs generate, generally decrease property values? In fact, there is numerous reputable evidence that STRs increase property values. Has the commission consulted with the Economic Development Commission like Stonington? Did other sources see that STRs? Increases property values and to continue with this line of logic, removing this property right through zoning will in fact decrease property values. Is it legal to pass a clause that would decrease property values across the entire town or any entire neighborhood such as Long Pond area? Please deny this application for this new regulation. The entire spirit and tone of this new regulation is not well-intended and very one-sided. Mr. Treister is on record at numerous public meetings stating his overwhelming opposition to STRs. I recommend that the commission start from scratch by bringing over to zoning our existing well-written ordinance so that well-written regulations can be enforced. Let's finally enforce the already well-researched regulations agreed upon by town council. Respectfully, we, we did that. Exhibit twenty-two. From Sandy Fetters, dear planning zoning committee, we live in a beautiful neighborhood. Let's keep it the same. Please do not vote to pass Mr. Treister's proposal to ban short-term rentals. We have lived here in Long Pond neighborhood for four years and we love the neighborhood. We are going for daily walks and bicycle rides. When the weather is nice and five minutes into our walk, we pass one short-term rental and a few minutes later, we pass another. They really add a lot to the community and to the neighborhood feel with their well-kept yards, attractive curb appeal, which I'm sure adds to real estate values. We have had no issues, complaints for short, or complaints for short-term rentals or owners of short-term rentals in our neighborhood. It is a privilege to share our wonderful Long Pond and all of its natural resources with people visiting our town. Ledger town officials should be proud to offer the lake life experience to many visitors year-round. Please do not vote to pass the regulations proposed by Mr. Treister. Number twenty-three from Angela Cassidy. I'm sorry, and Sandy Fetters was from twenty-five Homestead Road. Angela Cassidy, no address. It is apparent that this, to whom it may concern, it is apparent that the saga continues with short-term rentals in Ledger. Due to a choice few rowdy houses and disgruntled neighbors, not necessarily of the same houses. It is my understanding that the P and Z committee has introduced some stipulations to enforce hosted houses only. I think there would be much greater value to both the hard-working citizens that are running decent rentals. As well as the residents nearby, if the rules and standards are more specific. Rather than having Ledger play the unreasonable approach, we could make simple tweaks that make, that may please everyone involved. My short-term rental platforms, I am familiar with. My family stays in many when we travel. The owners have specified their expectations and outside cameras are almost always in the common and outside areas. It is made clear that if you are to have more than the allotted number of guests. It is made clear that if you are to have more than the allotted number of guests. Get too loud or take more parking, et cetera, you will simply be asked to leave at your own expense. I understand that, that we do not necessarily want our lovely tourist town to be overrun with short-term rentals. I'm grateful the current restrictions do not afford a major investor. To come in and buy multiple properties with, which could result in unaffordable housing. Local owners, however, striving to do their best, following regulations, paying taxes and fees is another story. It was made publicly, it was made clear publicly that many homeowners were interested in having that possibility available to them if they ever wanted. If they ever wanted it even temporarily. In a town where, with such high mill rates, I love to see any business going in and would encourage some fees on permitting. But by no means making infeasible demands on people already running reasonable short-term rentals. Let's keep Ledger moving forward and find accommodations for the, for all parties involved. Regards. This is from Kirk Bryson, five Long Pond Road. As a resident of Ledger with short-term rentals in my neighborhood, I'm writing to provide my public comment on the proposed new STR zoning regulations. I just received application, PZ twenty-one dash fourteen RA of Eric Treister and I would like to provide the following considerations. First and foremost, I live in the Long Pond neighborhood with STRs and I have no complaints nor do I see any harm in their continuance. Second, it seems to me the problem Ledger is having is with people, is with the people who A, did not comply. To get a STR permit or B, those who are not obeying the rules of the existing ordinance. So how is adding more rules going to fix anything? Do the current issues lie in the matter of regulation or enforcement? Third, I support STRs in my neighborhood because they are improving the quality of my neighborhood and raising the values of all houses around them. Since several houses near mine have been doing STRs, their properties have become visibly nicer and better kept. I benefit from this and would hate to see them go back to looking the way they used to look. Let's consider finding a way to regulate STRs, alleviate potential problems and add enforcement instead of overstepping on property owners' rights. And prob, possibly causing other problems such as houses that have become unkept. Ugly long-term rentals that will decrease my property values. Ugly long-term rentals that would decrease my property value. And again, I have several short-term rentals here in my neighborhood and they have not been a problem. So much so that there has been a nearby property, just a couple of houses away, that I didn't even realize was a short-term rental for several years. They are really not even close to looking commercial. I support having some rules and I think bringing existing ordinance rules over. Over to zoning does a great job and, and zoning will be able to enforce it.
Wait, I'm sorry, what exhibit was that? I missed that.
Uh, twenty-four.
Thank you.
And exhibit twenty-five, which is the last. Is from Lisa M. Curtis. No address. This is Ledger zoning committee. I hear there is a problem with enforcement of STR regulations. I know there was a well-researched and well-advised ordinance put in place a couple of years ago that was fair and reasonable. What is the reasoning for completely changing? And revising the regulations that the council extensively researched with input from all perspectives. I would hate to see STRs in town shut down. Especially those who are not problematic. This is the modern method of tourism and perfect for our town. Instead of making changes to the existing well-researched regulations. Could we focus on adding enforcement to the regulations? Please vote down the proposed new zoning regulations about STR and consider going about this differently.
Pardon me, Juliette. Exhibit fifteen, I also believe should be read it. I think that wasn't shown on the agenda. I can't get my screen to see that though.
All right, let's see if I can put my hands on it.
That was from the Hollisters.
This is from Ackley and Jean Hollister. Fifty-four Long Pond Road. Dear Planning and Zoning Commission, please accept this letter in support of the proposed application, PZ twenty-one dash fourteen RA. My wife and I have lived on Long Pond Road since nineteen ninety-four. Over the years, we have upgraded and maintained our property to enjoy throughout our retirement. We have been retired since twenty-twelve and we were enjoying the serenity and beauty around our home on Long Pond and Long Pond. In recent years, we have been subjected to a nuisance next door to us that we could not have imagined would occur in our single, single-family. Residential neighborhood when the new property owner began began operating an illegal short term rental. This operation became such a constant source of stress in our lives that we reached out to other neighbors for support and what ensued was a years long effort to bring these activities to a stop. We and other neighbors have spent hours at town meetings, writing letters, filed complaints and called the police to which the end result was the STR ordinance. Three hundred dash zero three three zero. Uh, this seemed like a step in the right direction as it would regulate STRs and we hope to reduce or eliminate the nuisance next door as well as others popping up in our neighborhood. Unfortunately, the ordinance, although well meaning in our experience, has failed to achieve its purpose and must not be renewed. As the issues we we were experiencing have continued, including multiple vehicles parked on our narrow road, two loud gatherings and foul language, three rentals ongoing during COVID restrictions. Four, a dog attack on a neighbor's young daughter. Five, STRs operating without permits. We have witnessed these events and have had to put up with it with this for years with no workable solution. As letters to offenders and no real enforcement or penalties has done little to deter violators. We need a solution that protects our quality of life. In our home of twenty eight years. The proposed application to only permit hosted STRs in Ledger and the rules and regulations set therein is the only viable solution. We have seen or heard of in years. We support this application as it recognizes the need. For fairness to all involved and we urge you, our planning and zoning commissioners. To approve the application. Now is the time to restore the character of our single family residential neighborhoods and preserve the communities before they become irreparably. Damaged for good. Thank you, Ackley and Jean Hollister. And I I know letters were coming in sort of very late in the day, so if they if you. If somebody has sent a letter that was after four thirty, I think.
Oh, five forty five. Uh, four forty five, excuse me.
Four forty five, uh, and it was too late to be included tonight.
Thank you, Juliette, for the for reading all those in. Uh, the way we will proceed now is to public comments. If you wish to make a comment, you do have the the raise your hand tool. Juliette or Nancy, I think, can see who has who wishes to speak and. Juliette, if you can do that, you can try to. Keep keep track and and recognize people. Again, I urge you to to um, keep your comments succinct. Uh, I'm certainly not going to set a time limit and uh, not be not be redundant to the sense that that you say what someone else has already said. You can certainly. Point out that you agree with uh, someone else's position. So with that. We will proceed with public comments, then we will go to questions from the commissioners to uh, Mr. Treister. And then we will um, see at that point where we are. Thank you.
Okay, Kate De Palma.
You'll have to, yeah. Thank you. Um, so I did send in a letter, but it was late in the day, so I anticipated you may not have received it in time to include it. Um, it is. It's not very long, but I'll go ahead and just read it. Uh, good evening. Um, my name is Kate De Palma Herb. I live at twenty August Meadows in Ledger. Approximately two years ago, I spoke to representatives from the town council in support of allowing short term rentals. My support for this program remains. Short term rentals bring income to property owners, local restaurants, coffee shops, gas stations and retail outlets with relatively few issues. There may be some isolated examples of bad behavior, but I do not believe that is justification to remove this opportunity for all who enjoy it. I agree there should be regulations to protect our citizens against nuisances such as excessive noise or on street parking that impedes traffic or potentially blocks travel for emergency vehicles. I also agree those regulations should be enforced in a manner that encourages adherence to expectations. Temporary guests nor permanent residents should be permitted to behave in a way that negatively impacts other citizens. Our town representatives spend a great deal of time putting together a thoughtful approach to enabling this program. I don't think it should be abandoned. Please work to find a way to enforce the regulations rather than simply abandon a program that benefits many of our citizens and business owners. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Kate. Anyone else? I see a couple of hands.
Yeah, now we have Nate Nate Weiss. You have to unmute Nathan.
You want that too, huh?
Yeah.
Hi Juliette. Uh, so Nate Weiss, um, I'm at twenty three B Bittersweet Drive and uh, we um, first of all, we do have. A house known to be a, you know, Airbnb house regularly attended and I don't hear it from where I am, but I know the neighbors in the immediate area. Do complain about late night parties and when I drive by, I could see there's some weekends where there's lots of cars. Um, I I and I agree with uh, with Katie that um, that's uh. I'm sorry, Kate now, right, Kate? Known each other a long time, so uh, that the uh, regu- that the the enforcement. Is probably the biggest issue to solve and I'm guessing it's been worked on around the country. Um, I'm not completely convinced that the concept of of the hosted. Um, you know, uh, rental is is um. The workable solution, although I get it, which is that the person who owns the house has a vested interest. In in doing extreme vetting as opposed to someone who's buying the house just to rent out. I I I don't have any answer or suggestion for that. Um, the my one question, biggest question was if a house is permitted. And has a history of rental, uh, will it be assessed? As an income producing property because uh, i- in in reality, once it's, once it's used. Uh, it, once it's auxiliary used as a rental property becomes significant. Its income producing value will define the value of that home. And and it will probably greatly exceed the um. Regular residential appraisal process. That that's where the town could get the benefit. That's that's my only question.
It would not. It would be a residential use.
And why is that, Juliette?
Because. STR is a residentially, it's still a residential use of a property. They they aren't considered businesses or commercial in any town. That's the whole point. They have to. They have to look and feel like a residence.
Interesting, because this one house is never, I mean, obviously, it's the the owner doesn't no longer lives there. And it's rented for close to three thousand dollars a weekend and it's busy most weekends. Uh, you know, so you're talking about a place that's worth, you know, way more than the residential value of a house here.
Um, the next person has their hand up. I'm.
Thanks.
Help me out. I don't want to try. Uh, you need to unmute though, sir.
Choudary, so it'll tell you. You can call me Tony.
All right.
Um, I moved in uh, Gansbury around. In eight. All having this, I came. Uh, it's so beautiful place, people.
Tony, you're freezing.
Short term rental is a good, it allows other people.
Can he? Juliette, if he turns off his video, he might get better audio.
Oh, so basically I moved here nineteen eighty nine. I came here fishing. I love the town. I I had a business here uh, for thirty years. Recently, I semi retired. But I think what I want to say, this is short term lease, a short term renting bring lot of people, lot of very quality people to the town. Uh, is brings exposure, bring the property values, demands of the house goes up. I think is overall, there's no negative. Most thing is very positive and I know Barnett for a long time. We've been friends for a long, long time and I know many of the people in the town. So I think uh, we already have a law. We should not throw it out with that. They said, don't throw the baby with the water, you know? Let's fix it. If we have a problem, we fix it. And allow the people to make some money. We pay a lot of taxes here. Let us enjoy the town. Let's see some rich people come in, have housed. It'll be very beautiful. We want to show what we have. Thank you.
Uh, Jim?
Yeah, Juliette. So we've heard about from a lot of people who obviously don't live next to one of these problems.
Yes, can you everybody state their full name and address?
I'm sorry, Jim Harwood, ten Esca Drive. We've heard from a lot of people who obviously don't live next to one of these problem houses, one of these houses that hasn't bothered to get a permit, isn't following the regulations. And uh, and it's been very difficult through the ordinance for the town to do anything about it because the ordinance was structured in a way that uh, only uh, only regulated. Properties that had applied for a permit and received the permit. For the properties owners that haven't applied for the permit and there's no permit. The only thing in the current ordinance. That uh, that the town can do is remove their permit and if they don't have a permit, then the town is 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 unable to do anything and these people have learned this. And they have not applied for this and I give you a perfect example. I live next to six Esca Drive. And uh, they moved in at beginning of the year. They started, they don't live there. Uh, they don't monitor it. Uh, Airbnb sends up to thirty five, forty people to this property. Uh, starting in April, it was probably three times a week, a party house till four in the morning till five in the morning and and then they'd get up again at eight o'clock, start drinking and continuing on. Now that's subsided a little bit now since it's only four degrees out and they can't go outside, sit on the deck and play in the pool. But uh, I'm I'm terrified about what's going to happen again come April when all of a sudden all these partiers start showing up again. There's no regulation to the number of people. It's a three bedroom house. The ordinance says they should only be allowed to have six people and and I've actually counted up to thirty five people in the backyard. Uh, they they make noise all night. Uh, they make noise early in the morning. And there are about six different houses in the neighborhood that have uh, submitted complaints over the last six and eight months. And the difficulty is the ordinance, the way it's structured can't do anything to them because all it can do is take away their permit and they don't have a permit. And my understanding is we're not alone in this situation. There are a lot of others. So we've heard a lot about what's going on at Long Long Pond. That's not the only place where the this uh, this type of thing is going on. And you know, it's great if if Robert Barnett and Ed Al are doing uh, are doing their jobs and making sure they're permitted and trying to control their guests. Others are not. The one next to me is not. Um, and that's part of the reason why moving this into into zoning rather than having it as an ordinance would add a little more, little more bite to to the people who are just totally disregarding the ordinance because they know it doesn't have any legs. So uh, I fully support Eric Treister's proposal.
Um, Mr. Chairman, do you want to? Skip over commission members for now?
Um. I I think I'll allow, uh, if commission members have specific questions that they wish to ask of Eric, they can ask them now. Otherwise, we can do it during the discussion. So unless the commission members have very specific questions, we can postpone that until we get to the discussion. Is that acceptable to the members of the commission?
Uh, it looks like we still have public comments. Are we still accepting those?
Yes, we'll still accept public comments. It's just that we will uh, we will reserve the the comments of the commissioners until we get to the uh, discussion section.
Well, I'm trying to wait.
Yeah. I was.
Are there other public comments?
Yes, we have Molly Barnett.
We'll proceed.
Hi, everyone. Um, I would just like to say that I completely agree with Jim's comment and I. Um, completely agree that the problem here really sounds like it's the. STRs that are not bothering to get permits. They are not listening to the rules. Um, they're causing noise late into the night. That seems to be the the big problem here and it sounds like there's overwhelming agreement there. Um, so I just would like to say I agree and I'd like to point out that it sounds like this is not really a two sided issue and it's more of um. An agreement that we do need enforcement so that those houses that are not bothering to. Follow any of the rules, there should be something done about that and I'm not sure what that is, but this proposal does not address that. Um, all this current proposal does is add more rules um, that the rule breakers are not going to follow. Um, so I just would also, you know, say that maybe we should reconsider a different direction here. Thank you.
Uh, just a, just a quick comment. Uh, kind of a point of personal privilege. I've known Molly for what, about ten years now, Molly? Haven't seen you in a while. It's good to see you. Uh. Uh, as I get old, I just got older. As you get older, you just get cuter. So I appreciate the opportunity to see you again.
Okay, Pam. Can you hear me? Yes, just remember to state your uh, full name and address.
Sure, my name is Pam Bartlett. I live at sixty two Long Pond Road. I appreciate the commissioners, everyone hearing uh, people's comments tonight. Um, I'm sorry to hear Nate Woody is gone. I appreciate his work as well and his service to our community. Um, I just wanted to make some points. Um, I. Totally second the message from the Hollisters, Ackley and Jeanie. Um, I also noticed uh, Mr. Fagin's letter wasn't read tonight, but it is in your exhibits, so hopefully the commissioners will consider that as well when they. If they um, move forward on this proposed um. Amendment or application for Mr. Treister. Anyone who's speaking against this or concerned with rules and limitations and regulations. Um, I would argue I don't think they did their research um, and took the time to really read through and understand what Mr. Treister is proposing. And why and why it will help and work for our town, why it will protect homeowners, why it will protect business owners, be the short term rental owners and operators. This does not ban short term rentals. It makes them have to be hosted. There's a significant difference. And um, I think the reasons for that are very clear cut because short term rentals and the way they're operating right now. Um, are a nuisance, will create problems, have created problems, do um, affect home values. They do affect the lives, the the character of a neighborhood. The neighbors, the people who live there, come home from work day in and day out and have to deal with people. It's Friday night, every night when someone comes to a short term rental. It's just the truth. It's just the matter when you live next door to one. It's it's absolutely beyond frustrating. It's heart wrenching. You love your home. You've taken your your hard earned money. And um, you buy a house and you put your money into it. You plan to live there the rest of your life. And now you have a hotel, basically in essence, next door and there's really nothing you can do about it. My neighbors and I basically felt defeated. Once that regulation was in place, we thought perhaps it's a step in the right direction, but we've learned that it really hasn't done anything to protect us. But there's no recourse. There are no penalties. There's no enforcement for people operating with expired permits with no permits. Um, doing basically what they want and finding a reason and excuse or story such as, oh, that's family. That's not. The guests or short term renters to kind of get around what they're actually doing and what how they're affecting their neighbors and their neighborhoods. I don't really have a lot prepared tonight. I just really want to um. Express how this is really just a step in the right right direction. I truly support Mr. Treister's. But Treister's efforts, um, the thoroughness of his research and why this is really a just a great. Excuse me, step forward for the town of Ledger. Um, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
We have other public comments. And if you can you lower your hand again, Pam and Nate, just so a new person can pop up in your spot. I am not seeing any.
Before we move on, uh.
I have a comment.
Oh.
Bob, the head of his hand.
Okay. Um.
Your name and address?
Yeah, Robert Barnett, sixty one Churchill Road, Ledger. And yeah, I have. I I said a lot in my emails and I think that I think there's maybe a question about whether hosted renter hosted houses are a solvable problem or not and whether they can be monitored in such a way. And I think we have difference of opinion right now that Pam Bartlett and her friend Ackley feel that it is still a problem and about he said a call about parties and we have false claims that there's family, et cetera. And I think when it comes time for discussion, I think I'd like to I would appreciate if the commission members could maybe if they have doubt that oh, there's no parties at our properties that maybe they ask Mr. Cherry about his record. And there's also alleged police record. I get it that if there's a party house next door to you that you know, and and they're not making an effort, I get that that that's a huge problem. I wouldn't want to be that person. And I get it that Pam and her husband Gino had a house next door to them. That was a huge party house and the owners made no effort. And and to rectify it. Well, we do make an effort and I realize that they're against the whole principle. I get that Mr. Trester is against STRs in general, always has been. We did two years worth of meetings before the ordinance multiple times. He stated to you is against it. I think the majority of the town is not flat out against STRs in town. And I'd like to reiterate what I said in my email real quick that this this proposal pretty much flat out bans STRs in town. Most STRs in a town like Ledger, when the homes that we have are non-hosted rentals. So so that that's it's a huge, it's a huge ban. So um so if there's a if there's a doubt again about what's going on at my daughter's property and my property, our two properties, if as far as if there's parties going on there, I think some investigation there to to really show that. You know, there's a lot of neighbors who say it's it's really good. I think it's a solvable problem. Cameras are can work. Mr. Trester claims that it's an unsolved problem. Cameras don't work, et cetera. And I think I already addressed the issue of whether it decreases property values or not. As Nate White, who's a very experienced real estate expert, you know, he was just, his point was that property values go up. But I think there's another question whether to go up in town generally or not. And I think that should be researched. Thank you.
Mr. Artwork?
Thanks. I'd like to ask Mr. Rob Barnett, just a couple of follow ups, if I may.
Robert?
Yes.
The applicant.
Yes.
Comment, question should be addressed to the applicant or the
Okay, okay, let's say. There were a couple of exhibits that that were written by Mr. Barnett. So I guess I was confused about that. Should we save that for the discussion then?
Well, you could ask the chairman quite it's 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 a little unusual to ask. It's not, public comment is not supposed to be a dialogue. It's supposed to be making comments.
Correct. If during, if we get to a discussion and there are specific questions that members of the commission raised that could only be answered by someone who's been at a exhibit, then we can proceed at that point. But Juliette's right. This is not a, this is not a dialogue at this point.
If I could, Juliette, Mike Cherry. My understanding is after we close the public hearing, all discussion takes place between and among the commissioners and the staff.
That's correct.
Applicant, the applicant and the others that came to the public hearing have no more discussion to be had. So if I think the chair needs to allow his commissioners to ask any questions of the applicant they may have now or maybe lose that opportunity, if I'm correct.
You're correct, Dave. I apologize. You this is right, that it's it is the time for members of the commission, if they wish to ask, ask Mr. Trester questions. And then we get into discussion, we can have general discussion.
And Mr. Mr. Chairman, I would also like a staff to be able to offer an opinion too.
If staff would like to go first? Or would you like to go last?
It makes no difference, so.
Let's go with, let's go with questions for Mr. Trester from members of the commission. Katie, do you have any?
I have a few questions for Mr. Trester. First question, in your definition of host, would you be willing or do you think it would make sense to not just say the owner of an STR, but perhaps an appointed representative, for example, a family member that might be staying there? It's a little limiting, I think.
Good question. The reason the application was required to the host, what the host was required to be the owner was because the income was in tight, what was intended to go to the owner in order to help the owner pay the taxes and maintain the property.
Okay. I so you you feel that you should tie the host to the income?
The 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 purpose of allowing a hosted STR is not to run a commercial enterprise such as a transient lodging. That's not its intent. Its intent is to provide another source of income to a homeowner so that that home will be more likely to be lived in by that rent by that owner and 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 the home will be properly maintained. That's that's the intent.
Okay.
If you decide to change that during your deliberation, that would be, that would be a minor change in my opinion, but I think the owner will have a stronger tie to the home than a a friend or a relative who's acting as the resident host.
Okay. And then under your purpose, where you do mention in the last sentence for financial gain. I don't think that we need to include that. I think it's limiting. There are opportunities through Airbnb to donate your space such as to traveling nurses and things like that, especially during the pandemic. That's been something that I know some some people have done. So I don't know why that's included or if you feel it's important.
The, again, it has to do with with the original intent of allowing ho- hosted STRs. The the financial gain does not have to be very much. We don't, we don't specify an amount. But again, if 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 you want to, if you want to put in a probation, minor amendments can be adopted during your deliberations. And as long as they're minor, they do not have to be filed with the clerk for ten days. They have to be very minor, but that's that's a very minor change. So if if you wanted to, if you wanted to say for financial gain or for donate or for donated housing or something, that's fine, that's fine.
I'm just curious.
If I I think, I think, I think the intent was that if it's for financial gain, you're subject to the STR regs. If it's not for financial gain, if you're not taking any income in, you're and it's hosted, there's still the owners in the home. You're not subject to the
Guest, yeah.
Okay.
I I don't have my application directly in front of me, so so I'm struggling here a little bit. Juliette, can you put, can you put the exhibit twelve up anyway? Can you do that?
Not easily right now.
Okay, that's all right. That's all right. We'll see how the questions go.
One more question. I'll just read it for you then. Item K, there should, there shall be no signage, lighting or other indication that the dwelling is an STR. Just curious if you would say no signage except for designated parking, you know, a small spot that says guest parking, I think is helpful in a lot of STRs so that it's clear when the guest arrives if they haven't. You know, it doesn't matter how many communications you send. Sometimes people don't get the memo and then you have to ask them to move their vehicle. So something small like that should should help people who choose to do this. Just a thought.
The a fair question and I'll I'll give you the rationale for why it's the way it is. Many, many years ago, I wrote the regulations for home occupations, which is a commercial use in a residential district. And we decided that it would be acceptable if the home occupation was invisible to the neighborhood. And by being invisible to the neighborhood, that meant no signs, no indication, no anything that make it made it look commercial. And I I adopted the same philosophy in my proposed STR regulations. There's there's several solutions to to your problem. One is is that in the communications with the prospective guest, you can send a map of the property and on that map it can identify where the parking is located.
Yeah.
I'm not a big fan of saying guest parking because the word guest parking is unusual in a residential district. Even the word, even a printed sign that says parking would be, would stand out in a residential neighborhood. And and the intent was to make it absolutely as invisible as possible.
That makes sense. Then on item N, you say a single family dwelling or its accessory apartment shall not be used as an STR if it's serviced by a shared driveway. But then in other regulations, in in the other portions, you talk about how they can't block the road. So I was curious why that item.
The, on the shared driveway, I'm going to let Juliette answer that. That was her recommendation. On the block, on the blocking of the private driveway on on the parcel itself, that is, that is, that is a a minor error on my part. Because that that would prevent a large number of short term rentals and that's that's not the intent. I I it should probably be changed to something like no more than two cars will be blocked in at one time or something like that. It's a that that was a mistake on my part. And and during your deliberations, that would be a minor change to to the proposed regulations.
Mike Cherry and I have actually taken out that sentence in our our counter proposal kind of thing.
Okay.
But the 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 shared driveway, it's common that you don't want to burden the other people on that shared driveway with a use that is now typically going to have more traffic than what you would have seen that you might have seen, you know, without a a short term rental use, even though it's supposed to be like a residence. And I think this regulation sort of will will curtail the party house scenario. It's still it's, you know, still lends itself to the potential of more traffic and with maintenance agreements and whatnot, you're having one house with more cars and, you know, that may not work out on a shared driveway. It's also a way to to limit where these can go in a way. So you happen to have a lot of shared driveways in your town.
That's what made me ask the question. Some are better shared driveways than others.
Where drivers are typically problematic on their own, don't need any help with you know, additional uses. A lot of regulations will say you can't have a home occupation on a shared driveway, for example. So because of the potential of extra traffic.
Okay, well, that that's the extent of my kind of like nitpicking kind of questions that I had. But I'd like to you know, continue this discussion with everyone else. So I'm all set.
Thank you, Katie. Tom Boedrop, do you have any questions for Eric?
Yes, I do. Eric, in your deliberations and work on this, did you look into the amount of problems that had been caused in the past and the amount of times that the zoning enforcement officer had been called or the police in any of these situations?
One of my, one of my exhibits puts a list together of those complaints. We do not have the police reports because they do not differentiate tightly enough to figure out which ones are STR noises versus other types of noise nuisances. But but one of the exhibits, Juliette, you can help me here.
I guess number eight.
One, one of the, one of the exhibits identifies the representative problems and the intensity of those problems that required some sort of enforcement request.
Would you have a guess on how many that might have been?
The I want to be careful how I answer this because the the number is not what is important in my mind. What is important is that a neighbor not suffer from a short term rental and even even a single event is wrong, especially in a residential neighborhood. So even even though technically a a short term rental is not taxed as a commercial use, for practical purposes, it is a commercial use. Commercial uses in residential districts should be invisible and any type of disturbance caused by guests in that commercial transient lodging is wrong. And my goal is to try to eliminate that as much as possible. So even if it's only twenty or thirty or forty complaints, that's, and there's fifteen thousand people in Ledger, that's, that's, that's even one is too many. No Inc. adopted zoning regulations a few months ago. During the first night of the public hearing, I entered it into the record. No Inc. prohibited all short term rentals, both hosted and non-hosted. And No Inc. is an ideal community to allow short term rentals and they prohibit everything. So so this is a little bit of a compromise. It allows hosted short term rentals. But by, but by prohibiting non-hosted short term rentals, we remove the risk of a problem. It also makes it much, much easier to enforce because zoning can issue cease and desist orders. And a violation of a cease and desist order is a criminal matter. It's a felony. And I have never seen someone ignore a cease and desist order. It's far more powerful than an ordinance. So I I I strongly recommend that we give this zoning regulation a try. Let's see how it works for six months or a year. And if it, if it, if it has problems, then we can, we can, we can tweak it. Zoning regulations are easy to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, and I certainly appreciate your efforts.
Could I ask a follow on question just for the board to clarify?
Please.
Mr. Trester. So if we are able to come up with a final you know, wording and and pass this through tonight, it would not preclude the continued discussion of allowing non-hosted short term rentals. This is just allowing hosted short term rentals.
May I respond to that?
Please do.
The, it's it's a little complicated, but unless a use is in the use, is in the use table, it is not permitted under zoning. Both hosted and non-hosted short term rentals, neither one is in our current zoning regulations, which means they are both prohibited. The only reason they're happening is because of the town ordinance, which will expire on February twenty seventh. This proposed regulation will allow hosted short term rentals, but it does not address non-hosted short term rentals, which means non-hosted short term rentals will again become prohibited when that ordinance expires. Does that, does that answer the question?
Part of the question. The other part being that we could continue to find a way to perhaps allow in a separate perhaps regulation.
Absolutely.
Right.
You can come up with, you can come up with a completely new set of regulations tailored just for non-hosted short term rentals, if you choose to do so.
Or vacation rentals or however.
Rentals or or anything. You have, you have incredible power in zoning.
Well, I just wanted to 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 get clarity on that because I want to make sure that there's, you know, there are a lot of people who have spoken about desiring to to still continue to host or to to continue to have non-hosted or vacation rentals. And I think that you know, continuing that discussion separate from this.
Yes, as a new application, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the the two subjects are even though there's some overlap, it's really two different animals because the the nuisance issue, I cannot figure out a way to guarantee the neighbors that they will not be disturbed on a non-hosted short term rental where the guests are vetted by Airbnb, which sometimes is not a good short-term rental where the guests are vetted by Airbnb, which sometimes is not a good vetting process. So, so I'm, I'm unable to figure that out, but there might be a way. And, and if there is a way, it needs to be a way that does not overly burden our enforcement mechanism. We don't want our CEO issuing a cease and desist orders every weekend. You know, it, it, it doesn't make sense. No, I chose to solve this problem by, by forbidding every, by prohibiting everything, both hosted and non-hosted. I don't think that's appropriate for ledger, but, but that, that is the issue. But no, absolutely. Uh, we, we, we can, we can submit a new application, uh, tailored for non-hosted short-term rentals. We can, we can adopt, uh, all sorts of, 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 of things. Uh, it's a special permit. We can do almost anything you want. Thank you.
Almost.
Juliet.
No, I, I just, if it's, okay, I'd, I'd like to make a few comments too. And, um, Mike Cherry and I, the zoning official, we've, we've gone over this. I've gone over some things with the attorney as well. And first of all, I would like to say that uh, Eric did a, a great job. He also did a great job uh, taking some criticism from his original draft and, and working with, with the planning staff to, to make a better regulation. That wasn't so, um, it didn't make so much of an attempt to regulate behavior, you know, the dogs and other, that kind of thing. So he, I think, I think this is an excellent regulation. First of all, I think it is very true to the ordinance. That was intentional. I mean, we didn't think that the ordinance was terrible. It just didn't have the teeth necessary in zoning. The first thing to consider is an SDR is a use, it's a use, it, it's a land use. It belongs in zoning. It does not belong in an ordinance. Zoning already has the mechanisms in place via the courts, via you, you even have a, a, an ordinance to, that allows you to cite, to, to find people. A lot of towns don't have that. They've got to go through the court. So that it's a very quick and fast process, it can be here to, to stop uses that aren't permitted and to, um, you know, hold people to the regulations. These regulations are, are more specific than the ordinance. So it gives you a lot more opportunities to stop nuisance uh, STRs. There's a lot of things that we can point to. Oh, you're in violation of that. You've got to come back before the commission and defend yourself, or we're taking away your permit until you can figure out how to comply. Um, so it's a little, it's, it's better than an ordinance in that respect because you can always bring somebody in for a hearing. You can threaten to take away their permit. You can work, the staff can work with them to bring them into compliance, but that cease and desist, that, that ability to issue a cease and desist, and then the ability to intent to cite and then to find them and then to accumulate fines is powerful. I think, um, I think the original intent was to, you know, not prohibit STRs at all. I disagree with that. We wanted to make sure that they were allowed in accessory apartments, um, as well as the main house. Try to give just, you know, another option for people who may not want to be in the house with the folks that are there. Uh, we did explore a way to try to tackle the lake issue, you know, the, the, the folks with a second home. We can't do that tonight in this regulation because it's, it would represent too much of a change. We, we, Mike and I did come up with something that might work. And I would suggest that we, we talk about that at a later date, but the important thing is to get a regulation in place before that uh, ordinance expires. I spoke to the attorney and he did ask me to put in, um, a, a clause to make it absolutely clear, uh, I'm not gonna be able to get it up again. I'll just read it.
You got it or you need to read it?
I, I have it in front of me. I just didn't have it up on screen, but basically he wanted us to make sure that we were crystal clear about the fact that those who have an S, that currently have an SDR that's permitted under the ordinance, that stays and you're still going to be regulated under that ordinance for the time you have left on your permit. You know, they do expire in a year. And then after that fact, that you would have to come in for a special permit, should you wish to continue to run an SDR. So it says all STRs that are currently permitted under ordinance number 300-30 shall be governed by that ordinance until such time as their permit expires. At that time, a special permit shall be required in conformance with the SDR regulations you're in to continue the SDR use. So that's, that's something that we, that I wanted to introduce to make sure you could get it in. Uh, the other issue is, um, both Mike and I agree that we don't agree that they shouldn't be allowed in duplexes. Essentially a single-family house with a, with a, uh, attached or detached accessory apartment is effectively a duplex. So I don't, I don't understand why they, they couldn't be there. Uh, we did suggest that we, they take out, uh, that Eric take out that last line in the parking section 4A and just leave it at suitable park, suitable off-street parking spaces for the SDR owner or host and his SDR guests shall be provided, period. It's a special permit. So you guys get to determine what, what is suitable. Uh, that is part of the power of the special, uh, permit that you have a little, um, discretion to determine whether or not the applicant complies with the regs as presented. So I do have some, those are the only proposed, uh, changes that, that, that Mike and I came up with, but I, I really, uh, Katie's right that you can, you can continue your discussions at a later date to figure out how to solve the other problem. The biggest issue we had is that we couldn't figure out a way uh, to get around the legal issue of allowing a use in a single-family home, you know. Okay. How do I put this? If you have, if you have a zone, a particular, particular zone and you're going to allow STRs in that zone, you can't treat houses differently. If there's a single-family house there, the house next door gets to have one too. So we were trying to solve in this regulation, you know, the, the companies coming in and buying up properties and taking away available housing. That is a huge, that is a big issue. It's a very big issue. And, and we were struggling with, well, what if somebody lives in Groton but owns a house in Ledger? And they probably would be responsible and nearby should they need to be called and why not? And we just couldn't get to a point that we weren't going to run into some legal issues. So that's something we could certainly explore, but we, not tonight. It would represent too big of a change. So um, I think there's opportunities to tweak this along the way, but right now, understand that we are not preventing STRs. If somebody went away for two weeks and rented out their house, nobody would ever know, quite frankly. We don't, we don't enforce to that level. A lot of times these regulations are in place in case there's a problem and then we have something that we can, we can solidly put our hands on to stop the problem. So I think you'll find that those who have been operating perfectly fine the way they have will continue to do so unless there's a problem. I have to plug in my computer. I'm going to lose you also.
While, while she's doing that, from the discussion and presentation from Mr. Treaster and other comments, I had a question back up in the short-term rental uh, definition. Mr. Treaster hung his hat on no legally pre-existing non-conforming possibilities by using the words for transient occupancy and subject to the Connecticut room occupancy tax. I would wonder if, if it might be worthwhile to strike those words and if somebody can show that they've been doing short-term rentals, less than 30 days from times uh, before zoning, that that be a legally non-conforming use? Or is that something that we would leave for a future date? Cause I, I see hosted, non-hosted and legally non-conforming. That legally non-conforming part, the, the people that have been doing it forever. Maybe, maybe not quite legal, but there are, there are people that are in midlife that when they're in high school, went up to the Stimson property to drink beer and they were there on weekends. And so there were cottages rented out, you know, Nate quit laughing, you were there with them. You know, that, that, how do we, how do we, now that, uh, Rob and, and Molly have, uh, uh, gotten religion and follow the ordinance, how do we, uh, protect their investment? And do we do that now or do we do that in the future? That's, that's for the commission. But those words, transient occupancy and subject to the Connecticut room occupancy tax, if I understand Mr. Treaster's comments would prevent legally non-conforming properties that existed prior to zoning unless they did those things. That was my only addition from all the discussion. Thank you.
And I believe the Barnett's, their permits will still be valid for a little, for a while now, right?
Yeah, we just, we just renewed, so they're good for about a year.
So we have, you do have some time to work out some other things.
Uh, Tom, do you have any additional cur, uh, questions for?
No, I'm set. Thank you.
Uh, Paul? Do you have any?
Yeah, just, uh, a question that I have is, you know, how many non-hosted uh, pieces are out there that, that are in use? I, I don't.
There are a few, probably what, four or five that we know of?
There's, there's four or five total and out of those, Rob and Molly have two, and there's a third one up on, uh, yeah. So there's, there's about four.
And Esca Drive is non-hosted. That's.
It's, well, it's not hosted, but it's not permitted either. So there, yeah.
So that's the real question. How do we stop those? Right?
Well, the, the, once, once the ordinance goes away, the enforcement.
Okay, okay.
And cease and desist. And as, as Mr. Treaster points out, you can, uh, I sent a letter out today that has fines of $150 a day for non-compliance. Uh, so it can add up pretty quick. Uh, we've seen fines in other communities that are in six figures because people figure they're going to ignore it. You can't, it's, it's, uh, once it's, once it's done and it's through the hearing process, it gets filed with the court and it's the same as a finding of the judge in the court.
So it's attached to the property.
It'll lean, right?
The lane. Yeah.
You lean it for more than it's worth by the time you get there.
It's an effective tool.
It's a big.
Yep.
Paul, any other questions?
No, that was my one question. Thanks.
Uh, Jim? Questions for Eric? As opposed to general discussion, which we'll get to in a second? Jim, are you there, Jim? I see you there. Oh, there you go.
Okay, this, I get confused sometimes because we have two gyms.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I met you. I'm at the gym that's on the commission, dispose the other gym. Thank you. Any questions directly for Eric?
Um, no, I mean, I, I think a lot of things have been clarified for me just by listening, so I'm, I'm good.
All right, if there are no other, uh, if there are no other questions for Mr. Treaster or no other comments from the staff for Mr. Treaster, I believe I can close the public hearing at nine eleven.
Oh, hold on.
Yeah, uh, real quick, I want to thank everyone for, for taking this application seriously. Uh, it was a pleasure working with Juliet. She's a, a true professional and I, I value her contributions to the town. And, uh, uh, hopefully, hopefully this will be a, a first step in what will eventually become a a, a reasonable solution to a serious, what I believe is a serious problem. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. I'm sorry, we have a hand up?
Yep. Pam?
Pam?
You gotta unmute again.
You're muted.
Uh, sorry. Thank you again. Um, I just want to thank, um, Juliet, her comments to me um, are absolutely the crux of the situation. I think it really needs to be a zoning issue so these things can be enforced. Um, and I think that's the way we need to go and you can work out whatever you need to work out. I would like to comment about Rob and Molly. Uh, that is the property the athlete and Jeannie are speaking of, that I am speaking of, that I believe other neighbors were speaking of, stopped speaking of because we felt defeated. Um, and I have a question about when their young son is having a party in the little red structure next to the short-term rental. What does that, um, how does that, how does this protect me as a homeowner? Um, in enforcing, uh, these rules, does this work in any way? Is that a accessory structure now under this new, um, application? Or is that part, I don't understand if that's part of the property, not part of the property, um, what's going on there? But, um, it's not all butterflies and roses and it hasn't been for any of us. Um, they're not the only problem. They have made some changes, but they still kind of go along at their own rules. Um, as far as I'm concerned and my husband and others. Um, and I know this is not about how many people are doing this. This is how many people you know of as far as the town goes who are operating. The complaints are however many people are still complaining, but this is something we have to look at for the future of our town. If this goes unregulated or un, um, uh, regulated, that's it. Um, I don't want a corporation for a neighbor. I want a neighbor for a neighbor. And, um, I hate to see this get out of control. So I really do hope, um, that at least today we see this um, application move forward and we start to make, um, serious changes. Thank you again.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? If not, I thank Eric for, uh, his presentation. Now, Eric, we take you in a number of ways, but seriously is the one way we always take you and we appreciate all the effort that you put into this as you always do. And, uh, we value your input, not just in matters like this, but, uh, all matters, uh, zoning related. You are one of the sources of institutional memory for this place and I certainly value your assistance. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, then I believe Juliet, I can close the public hearing at nine eleven unless there's a reason not to do so.
No, just let's make absolutely sure nobody else has.
That's, I didn't see anybody else, unless you see somebody. I see nobody.
No, I'm scrolling through. Nope.
All right, then I'll close the hearing at nine eleven or nine twelve, I guess now. And I will open up the, uh, discussion and decision application, PZ 2114 RA of Eric Treaster in Town Huntington Way to amend the zoning regulations to permit hosted short-term rental as an accessory residential use in residential districts. As Juliet and I think Mike have noted, this is now, uh, for the, uh, the commission to discuss. And so, uh, I will open it up to the, the commissioners for their comments. Again, starting with, uh, just because it's top of my list, starting with Katie.
Why don't you start with the motion, please, Tony? You want a motion that you're going to discuss? You're motored.
Uh, no, I don't. Just by way of, of comment, uh, even if we do not recognize such explicitly, uh, all commissions and boards in town, including, um, town council, use the small group modifications of Robert's Rules of Order. And one of the things the small group modifications allow us to do is to discuss a, uh, an item, uh, come to a consensus, decide what we want the motion to be and then make the motion. It makes it easier than making a motion and then having a dozen amendments to the motion. So, uh, I, I'm going to, I should have announced this at the beginning. I'll be running, um, media minutes, sorry, meetings using the short-term modifications to Roberts. Uh, so my intent here is to have a discussion. Uh, see if we can come up with a consensus, what we want the motion to be. Uh, Juliet is going to be making notes. Uh, if we come to a consensus, Juliet can then read the proposed motion. If the proposed motion is acceptable, somebody can move it, we can second it and we can vote on it rather than moving, amending, moving, amending, moving. So that's my intent. If it's acceptable to all the members of the commission. All right. So we will, we'll move to comment, Juliet. I'm sorry, Katie. Your general comments here?
I think, did, did, uh, Juliet and Mike say they had some proposed, uh, changes they wanted to?
Oh, that's right. I, I think they.
You've muted yourself, Tony.
Uh, I'm muted. Thanks for keeping me straight, guys. I think, uh, Juliet does have that.
I'm, I'm, I have it up here and I don't know why I won't. Let me try to open it one more time and see if I can do the share again.
I may have it as well. Let me see what happens if I try to share. Can you folks see that?
Oh, perfect. Yes.
Okay, I can, I have it. So, um, here it is, and I believe that, uh, Mike and Juliet's, uh, changes are in red. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So you can see.
Zoom in on that a little bit.
All right, now that's going to be a little bit. All right. Let me see if I can find where in my.
Thanks, Tom. I was thinking the same thing.
The bottom right-hand corner. The bottom right-hand corner. Yep, the little slide, the sliding bar.
How's that? That's the best I think I can get it. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay. So Juliet, you wanna narrate here and I'll just scroll for you?
Yeah, it's just, this is only, we felt that duplexes should be included so that. So I just added duplex wherever it said single family, except for the part. About accessory apartments because typically an accessory apartment wouldn't be permitted. With a duplex because you already have essentially a second dwelling unit. So I clarified that. So that's all those changes are and then. In that general requirements, again, you'll see in that first paragraph A. I only, only added it for the first line because the rest of it dealt with houses that had apartments. Um, there was some discussion back and forth whether or not apartments and condominiums should be used as SDRs. I'm indifferent to that. I mean. It's a little bit closed quarters, but, um. If it's hosted, I guess it doesn't really matter. Um, and then I made the change to. Uh, the parking line, which is a little bit farther down. That right there. Only because if you have a couple cars in the driveway, they're gonna be blocked, so it's nothing you can do about that, really.
Exceptions.
Yep. The, the attorney requested that that be included.
Uh, those are all the, I'm gonna, alright, I'm gonna leave this temporarily up since we may have been going, going back to it. Uh, so, uh, now I think we can move to, uh, comments, Katie.
Um, yeah, I think actually if you start at the top, we could all, I don't think we need, do you want us to go one by one or should this be a discussion?
I just, no, I think if, I, just initially, if anyone has general comments about this and then we can go section by section. Uh, so just if you have general comments for or against, um, this would be the time to, to state them.
Well, um, I, then I will, I will state that I, um. I used to operate a short-term rental, so I'm very familiar with them. I haven't for a number of years and I don't plan to for a while, but maybe in the future. So I am in favor of passing something that would allow short-term rentals. Um, and I do think that it does belong in zoning. And I think that this goes a long way to making something workable. And I, I do agree with the changes to the duplex. That's very similar to a, um, accessory dwelling. It makes perfect sense to me to add the duplexes in. So the, those are my general, uh, statements and, and, um. You know, I think that it, we, we probably wanna, you know, change a couple little things here, but I think. We're on our way to, uh, to something that I think could actually be a model for a number of. Local areas who are having problems with short-term rentals.
Thank you, uh, Tom.
No, I'm good at this point. I'm just trying to listen to everybody.
Uh, Captain White Scrubber?
Oh, I'm good. Thanks.
Uh, Jamarc?
Um, well, yeah, well, the only, I guess the only question I have and I, I really did honestly read everything. Um, although it's a lot to absorb, um, one thing that I'm trying to. Trying to get a handle on, um, from listening to, uh, the, the, uh. The, uh, different, uh, citizens that, that gave their letters and people going through problems and, and so forth. For example, uh, the Barnett family has two or three STRs in one neighborhood and then. Um, I think, uh, Juliet said exhibit number twenty-four that she was reading. Um, um, some, uh, gentleman wrote that he has several STRs in his neighborhood. And so like, I guess my question is, um, you know, whether or not. We should put in contingent or maybe it's more for a future question on the limit to how many. STRs in one neighborhood or before you know it, the whole neighborhood becomes one big STR. Whether or not that's, you know, I don't know if that's too big of a question, but that just kinda lingers in my mind.
Well. I, I think the purpose of this is that they are indistinct from the neighborhood, that, that they don't. Um, you wouldn't be able to tell that and then. You know, and if you can tell, then you have a problem and, and it gets, you know, you get cited for it, right?
And I believe also the issue is mostly with the non-hosted SDRs. It's not gonna be with, with this particular, the hosted SDR issue. Uh, I don't think that these, these SDRs in these, in the Long Pond area are hosted. They're not people living there and renting out part of their house. So it's, I think it's a different issue.
Okay.
It's an issue you'll have to explore with an attorney carefully because if, if the. It's limiting the use on one property and not the one next door is where you get the problem, so we'll have to figure it out.
Right, and I, I don't think at this point we wanna go there. Uh, I, I also support this. I do share the concerns, certainly of people like the Barnetts and I think we need to address that down the road. I believe there's a difference between. Um, absentee ownership, uh, where people, the people who own the property are not in town. And, uh, people like the Barnetts who are domiciled in this town, they are invested in this town. And I think we need to find a way down the line, uh, to allow. People like that to rent their, uh, in, in the Barnett's case, their, their places on Long Cove. Uh, I see that as being very different from, uh, somebody who, who lives in New York or, or. Ohio and buys a, a place on Long Pond and rents it. We cannot address that tonight because that would be a major change, but I do believe. We need to commit to, uh, looking at that in the future. I don't think we wanna discriminate against. Um, citizens of the town who are trying to do the right thing and who are physically present here. And are able to monitor their property. So that's my only comment. I agree with all the other changes. If there are no other comments, we can look one more time at the proposed regulations. Are there? As we go through here, are there any changes, even minor ones that? I mean, Katie's usually really good at this. Uh, do you see stuff, Katie, that you, you wanna dot an i across it?
Um, Mr. Cherry brought up the last portion of the definition of short-term rental, the, um. Consisting of the rental of one or more rooms. Yeah, for, uh, by guests for transient occupancy where the rental term is thirty or fewer days and subject to the Connecticut room occupancy tax. I do think that that's adding a lot of language to the definition for maybe not a lot of. Gain, there's probably only one or two properties that might be able to prove that they've been operating since the fifties. As a short-term rental, is that what I understand the intent of that is to exclude those?
If, if I understand Mr. Treister's explanation, those lines would. Preclude somebody from claiming illegal non-conformity. And I agree with you that there may be a handful of properties that. Even existed back then for rentals and even a fewer number that would have records to show us. Cause it's on the applicant to show that. What's, what's not there is if we take that out. And allow legally non-conforming properties to exist, these regulations don't apply to them. Because they predate the regulation. So in some ways. Um, I, I'd almost like, you know, I, it's, it's more than we can take in one bite, cause I think. You would want some way to allow them to get a special permit, to put them in the category of. You know, either hosted or legally non-conforming, you can get a special permit. Which then would make them somehow conforming and starts giving me a headache on how to figure that out. It's, it's, uh. But that was something I didn't catch until Mr. Treister explained it.
So do you think it would be a good idea then to remove it at this time?
Well, there's a year, they just got their permits. There, there aren't that many. And it, and it, it could be. As, as simple as a change, take those words out in the future. Um, or you can take them out now. I mean, it's really the commission's decision. That was my concern. I'm. I'm overjoyed that I've got some means of enforcement for people who. Decided they didn't need to follow any regulations, because under the ordinance, I had nothing.
Mike, which words would you suggest, are you suggesting we would take out?
In, in the short-term metal definition, for transient occupancy. And then I would have put a period. After thirty or fewer days and also remove and subject to the Connecticut room occupancy task.
So you would take out for transient occupancy and then you would put a period after thirty or fewer, thirty or fewer days?
Correct.
Uh, is everyone amenable to that change?
Yes.
Sure, that's easy.
Okay, Juliet, do you, do you have that down?
So it would read consisting of rental of one or more rooms by guests where the rental term is for thirty or fewer days.
Period, yep, correct.
I think that makes it easier for people to read and understand it, honestly.
And, and it meets our intent of. Not bringing in absentee owners that, that live in New York or New Jersey or California or they're in LLC someplace. And, and if it doesn't work, we can modify it in the future. What? You know, my only concern is if we have a bad actor under a special permit, we have means to pull them in. If somebody is pre-existing non-conforming legally, uh, they predate zoning and. Uh, we'd have to use other means to enforce it and there's always other means.
Good, thank you. Uh, we'll, we'll move on to the next section, which is host. Anyone have any problems with the host? Section as, uh, with Juliet and Mike's added. I'm sorry.
What, wasn't there some discussion about a designated representative or something?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if we need to do that or not, but I was just thinking, um. For example, when we used to have our short-term rentals, sometimes if we were traveling, I would have my brother stay at the house. And we'd give them his phone number instead of ours and, you know what I mean? It just, I don't. You're not gonna be, I know you're not gonna be regulating people that closely, but, uh. It would just allow for, cause later on in the application, you talk about having your license and that it matches the property card and. Contact information and it would be nicer to have some freedom to. Provide other representatives' contact information so that you can comply with being reachable.
Katie, I think that belongs in that other section. I think here what we're looking at is somebody that's domiciled, so.
Okay.
I, I could have a second home in Florida that I stay in for five months out of the year, but this would still be my domicile. Uh, and, and, you know, I think in that permitting section and who's, who do I call? That if there's not words there now to say, if you're not in the area, you have to designate somebody. Once again, is that zoning or is that part of their, their package that they give us on how they're gonna regulate the, the use?
Okay, yeah, so we could, we'll save that for later.
Alright, accessory apartment. Everybody good there? Accessory apartments are not permitted within or on the same parcel.
Is that true that they're not allowed as an accessory, separate structure on a duplex lot?
Uh, I'm not sure if your rigs have it now, but they will.
Okay.
Right, right now, we don't allow detached accessory structures, so. When we get there, if you already have a duplex here. It becomes the same problem we had when we were talking about accessory structures originally, when we went from in-law apartments to accessory. How do you get septic? How do you get water? How do you get power? How do we do this? Luckily, the, the legislature fixed that with their new zoning enabling act, but. Right now, we don't allow it, so it's not a problem. We just need to catch it when we do.
Alright, use table, there should be no issues, I believe. Uh, short-term rentals, all we're doing is adding or duplex. Anybody see any problems in purpose? Or issues?
Um, go back one real quick.
Yes, sir.
I think we need to say hosted short-term rentals are permitted in the use table. Cause as it's written.
The definition of short-term rental.
Is that it's hosted.
Is that it's hosted.
No, it's not. So I think this is where we need to say hosted.
Hosted, alright.
Okay, and that leaves room for non-hosted in future.
So we're gonna add hosted in front of SDRs?
I think that fixes it.
I think fixes it too. Alright, moving down to purpose. Anybody have an issue with purpose here? Did you read this?
Uh, the financial gain thing, I actually. That, I agree with, that's completely unenforceable. We will never know if they're making money or not. It's irrelevant to planning and zoning. Money is irrelevant to planning and zoning.
That's a, that's a, that's a good point as well, so.
Much take out for transient occupancy for financial gain, that whole clause and then it'll read as a short-term rental in accordance with the requirements of the section.
Good.
That makes, that makes sense to me.
It's a special permit and, yeah, words later that allow you to add stuff.
Good. Juliet, you got that change?
Yep.
Okay, uh, general requirements. STR or do, what do you wanna say again? Hosted STR or just STR? What does it matter?
I, I think you've already said it up above.
Okay, I think so too. I just wanted to be sure. Thank you. Everybody good with that section? And then we're gonna say we're taking out duplexes here, so apartments and condominiums should not be used. Yep, of course. Current taxes, right? Uh, shall not, everybody good with, shall not have a zoning, building, fire, health code violation, etc. Public health or risk, safety?
That's your blanket, uh, public, uh, I mean, a special permit language.
Yeah.
The number of, number of guests looks right. I think we've talked about that before. Uh, alright, under competent monitors, yeah, yes, absolutely. Um. Advertising, whatever it says shall include, but not limited to, let, let's just do a lot of other things as well, which is fine. Is anything else that anybody sees in there that has to be included?
Hold on, stop moving.
Alright. Number of permitted guests, number of bedrooms, the limit on vehicles, the statement guest parking is off straight. Can't have a nuisance. It has to include pet rules. Declaration the host is the owner of and has primary residence in the SDR accessory apartment is appropriate.
These give you tools for like, should somebody start to become an issue and you wanna bring them in for a hearing to, you know, threatening to take away their. Special permit, these are the things you'll be most likely talking about.
STR use must be essentially invisible, not create a nuisance. Uh, not be detrimental. Do you just get another general thing here, set up quality of the resident's neighborhood, not interfere with the quality of life? That gives us a lot of things we can play with too.
Yep.
Yeah, that you can discuss.
And non-lodging use, um. Uh, you can't have weddings, receptions, banquets, corporate retreats. Um, and it says such as, so it includes other things, so we can include other things under there if we want. These are examples.
Captures, that captures the words from the ordinance. The ordinance was worded the other way, saying it was for lodging and sleeping. This is a little bit better, cause it does list some examples of things you can't do.
No signage, lighting or other indication the dwelling is an SDR. Host is responsible, yes. Host must be reachable at all times by providing a card listing, name. Address, phone number, email address to his cast agent, but it's at the police department. So, yeah, if the host is not in the place, which they may not be at that point because they're working, they have to be reachable.
Just to modernize, can we use the, the pronoun there?
Uh, yes, thank you. Yes, there, 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 yes. We'll take that sexist his and I, I don't like his her either. I hate slash, hate the slash, she's there. His or there, no, hit, use there. Even though it's grammatically incorrect.
Yes.
As an old grammarian, I hate that.
Not more than I do.
Um, is, this might be the point where we say. Um, is, this might be the point where we say, uh, by providing a card listing their name? Or? A representative's name or however we wanna word that?
That would, that was the place I was thinking of. I, I don't have words for it, but.
Yeah.
You would say the host or a designated representative.
Must be reachable.
Must be, yeah, there you go. That's good.
Works.
That works. The host or designated representative must be reachable. And then the second his gets changed to there as well, in there.
I mean, that's, that's a little bit difficult in that when you come in for a permit, you're gonna have to request that they give you. A, a secondary person to contact.
No, if you say or. The host or.
But we have to be able to contact them too. Right?
Okay.
All right, yeah.
I think that shows up in three F. The STR host agreement and rules and regulations that, that you would wanna say, including the list of contacts.
Yep, okay. That's a good point.
So then.
This is the, well, this is the requirement, then where you list it is in three F, right? What's the central requirement? You, you give me it with.
So then maybe we don't make it a requirement, but it's, it's acceptable that they provide an additional contact. Is that possible? That, that we don't even need it?
It's up to you.
Well, it's getting a little more.
It would prevent someone who's, you know, away or out of the country and has their phone turned off and is expecting someone else to be handling calls to, you know. I think it makes sense to have the host or a representative must be reachable.
And or does not require that they have a representative, it just gives them the option.
That's what I would.
I mean, yeah, the idea of this is that the person is present, although again, that's not entirely enforceable, but. Because I can envision a scenario where a homeowner, their domicile there is, is away. And, or staying at the Holiday Inn while they're renting their unit, but. Um. So I think, I, I think it's reasonable to ask for a, a secondary contact.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause it even could just be a husband and a wife, you know, it might not be. Someone who doesn't normally live at the home.
Right.
And the host can actually be a couple if they both own the place.
I'm, I'm just gonna ask my neighbor to the west of me to always cover for me.
There you go, same.
That's a good idea. That'd work.
I do think a secondary, a secondary contact is a really good idea.
Yep. So do I. Okay, moving on. Yeah, we have a duplex, single, et cetera. Um, must be permitted, okay, applications, submitted requirements.
Oh, wait.
Sorry.
N.
N.
So we still, do we all agree that people who share a driveway shouldn't be allowed to have short-term rentals?
I think that's a good start.
You wanna include it?
I, I think a, as it's worded, really. It makes sense. It, it precludes. Problems.
You know.
Going forward. If somebody wants to come to you later to make a case while it, why it's all right. Um. You know, I, I just. They're still gonna be parking off-street, but if they're parking in the shared driveway, blocking access for one of the other people.
Well, wouldn't we have to see a site plan and see the approved parking space?
Yes.
Yes, but. Um. My best example is when, when the kids were home and going to school. They were close enough, uh, that they're both in high school at the same time. And they were both involved in different activities. At that point, we had four cars. Well, there's room for two in the garage, but if my car's in the garage and the kid's cars are on the driveway.
You don't have any room left for an STR.
Yeah, well, not so much the STR, but I may have to move three cars to get out, or I had to park my car in the snow. And scrape windows and stuff to go to work, well. Build a bigger garage, right?
Funny how that works.
So are we good? We're leaving this in this point?
I think at this point, yeah, that.
Okay, we can always change.
You don't get to vote on that, Mike.
I know, but, I know, but I, I still want as a thing, as, as yours, Juliette, as well. Uh, dwelling used without a special permit is prohibited, we agree with that. Application requirements. Copy LLC approval?
So this is considered a change of use if you apply for this permit?
Right.
And is that what allows them to do this testing or?
Well, you, you want Leglight, you want the ability of Leglight to verify that the septic system can handle what's going on. There's, there is argument, and I will concede this, this, that. We were just trying to make sure Leglight got a, a. A chance to review. If it is purely a residential use and they've gone through the proper channels. And that it's been inspected to verify that they're not lying about the number of bedrooms, then you wouldn't actually need. Uh, Leglight. Some would argue that it is not a change of use because you don't want it to be a change of use. You want it still, it is residential, staying residential.
That's what confused me.
Right, so we could say, uh, we could just say Leglight approval is required. Um, I'm not sure if. It is legally, but.
We could request the, that it's approved. I think I'd be fine with leaving the first.
Use though. You're still, you're. It, an STR is a use in the table and it's accessory to a single-family house, right?
It's an accessory use.
So. So you can argue that they've gone from just a single-family to. Uh, adding on an accessory use that Leglight would in fact review.
Okay. So it is technically. So even though it's an accessory, you see, it's still a change of use.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really an addition of a use and Leglight does review accessory uses, additions, accessory apartment, you know, they review all of that, so.
Okay.
I think it'll be okay.
All right.
Uh, I have a question on the next two, and this is for, for Captain White Scarver. Uh, his service is much more recent than mine. Is it still the, uh, the case that someone could have a, uh, could have a residence, could be living in Connecticut, but in the military and have a, and still have their driver's license from another state?
Yes, it is.
I thought I, so I, I, so it is certainly possible that we could have somebody who, uh, is, is hosting an STR who does not have a Connecticut. Photo ID or Connecticut driver's license because they're military. So I think we should take out Connecticut.
You could handle that in, uh, this special permit process if you wanted. I mean, just to say that. Make them prove another way that they're domiciled there, but. I don't know.
Wouldn't their name be on the property card? So I mean.
Yeah, their names on the property card.
I think they can offer up an explanation enough to say, hey, well, I'm in the military, blah, 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 but here's my property card and here's my mail.
So you'd prefer to leave Connecticut.
Pardon? I can leave it in or take it out. It's up to you guys. Do you wanna delete Connecticut or do you wanna leave it there?
It wouldn't make any difference because i- if it says it has to be the same address as his proposed STR, so it would have to be a Connecticut driver's license in order to do that. No way it couldn't be if it has to match the address, so.
So, so we're, we're looking for some official means of showing that's a domicile, so let's, let's change the words to say. Uh, documents. Showing primary residence is the same as the address on the proposed STR, and then, you know, maybe it'll be a utility bill or.
That's a little dangerous. I wouldn't do that.
Yeah.
It should, you should show that, that property card or something else. I, I think.
Well, the next one down says, shows a property card, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, anybody can, so now you have. Uh, you know, a company in New York who.
Yep, I.
Has a name and you, he sends in a utility bill to the house to, in his own name, and then comes in with a property card that has his name, I, you're not.
What if, what if we just take out Connecticut and it's a photo ID and, or a driver's license showing the primary residence and if they're, you know? If they've got a. A card from another state, but they can prove that they live here. That way we don't have to say Connecticut.
No.
You, you understand though that it has to match the STR that's being used, which will be in Connecticut.
Yeah, and there's, there's a problem because their address on their driver's license may not be their Connecticut address.
But they could have a photo ID with, with their address that, that is issued by the military or something, I mean.
Yeah, and, and this one, I think we can. My, my gut feeling, so, but, let's just leave it, and if we, we did get that very unusual situation where it's somebody in the military. We're gonna approve it.
You know, you could. You, you could just say a copy of the applicant's official photo ID or Connecticut driver's license.
Okay.
But that way, the ID could be something else.
But it still says showing domicile.
I know.
You know, I'm sitting there going, okay, well, it's a special permit, so I can't approve it anyway.
Yep.
But an official photo ID could be something else and not a driver's license. So maybe there is the scenario that you have an official, you know, some official photo ID that does in fact have this address.
That's what I'm thinking.
Back when I was a bill cleaner on the ark, uh. The, the significant other had to change their driver's license, but now we fix that to, uh. They can still maintain their license in the state as their, as the service member.
Yep. Almost more trouble than it's worth, folks. I, I think we leave it. My opinion is let's leave it and we, and we can deal with that individual case if ever comes up.
Yeah, I agree with Tony.
We may be.
Okay.
We may be, um, this may be a solution in search of a problem.
Yeah.
Okay. Detail floor plan? Good with that? We're requiring the site plan?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be an A two, but it has to follow. The special permit. Uh, requirements.
And then the, the coverall or the, the, yeah, the overall F.
Agreement, yeah.
Yeah. Suitable off-street parking should be provided. On-street parking prohibited, covered garages may be used, parking spaces have, okay, all weather surfaces fine. That means it can't be grass and mud.
All right, but it could be gravel.
Sure, could be gravel. Could be paved, could be whatever concrete. Uh, exterior permanent lighting, zoning, sure, right? Refuse shall be contained, yep. In the event, okay, in the event the ownership is transferred of an, its new owner, if, um. Its new owner, if the antennas could be used, must update, resubmit, yep. And then we have enforcement? Many issues with enforcement? And finally, we have number nine, which is all exceptions, exceptions, all STRs, et cetera. That's just the, that's the grandfather clause. Are we, uh, are we good with this, commission members? Anyone have any issues? If not. Are we fine? Uh, Katie, you good?
Yeah.
Tom?
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
Yep, and Jim, you're good? I hate to do this to you, Juliette, but then I need you to read this whole thing into the record. And then I will ask if somebody will move what Katie, what, sorry, what Juliette has read, that way it'll be in the record.
Um, we do not have to read the entire regulation into the record, no.
Okay, what do I need? What do we need to, you tell me what the motion needs to be and we will make.
Before you do that, um, can you have some discussion on your findings?
Um.
You're, that, make a statement about the, if you agree with, uh, Mr. Treister's finding that it's com, um, and that it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development.
Oh, that's right, we have to do that, don't we?
Three, yep.
Thank you, we need, we need to do that. Uh. So we, we can include that statement and that statement Juliette is, give me the statement, please, that this is consistent with.
The plan of conservation and development in particular, uh, section four point three. In the housing section, I believe he was discussing.
Except that is required, isn't it?
Yeah, you should usually chat about it for a second.
Yep. But.
And the comprehensive plan, which is the other zoning regs, so.
Yeah. But I think we, we found that it is consistent.
Well, I, I would say. As staff, that you're consistent with the intent to, um. You know, provide. Provide housing, so you, you, this is an attempt to safeguard some of the units that could be scooped up by, you know, a, a company or somebody in town even buying three or four houses to. To use as an Airbnb, which would take away available units to, uh, for, you know, people looking to rent or. So in that regard, it's, it's consistent with your plan. I, I don't have the P O C D in front of me to be able to pull out other things.
I, I think that's sufficient, that it's sufficient, that it is, uh, it is consistent with the COPD. And we find that.
That always cracks me up when people say COPD, the disease.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke as well, CPOD. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move. In favor. Of application P Z twenty-one dash fourteen R A. With the changes and adaptations that we've made this evening.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second. Okay.
Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
Everybody's seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I, is there any further discussion, going once, going twice? I will call for the vote. Uh, Katie Stanlin?
Yes.
Tom Boudreau?
Yes.
Paul Arts Carver?
Yes.
Jamarak?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Uh, I think we can knock this down now and go back to the agenda. Let me, let me unshare. And. Moving to the next agenda item, which is, uh, old business. Is there any old business? Do you have, you have anything?
Uh, no, we have new business.
We have new business, all right. Uh, the, the new business is the, uh, the eight twenty-four review. Uh, there is some question about whether we actually need to do an eight twenty-four review. And these are, these are roof repairs. Um, I'll ask the planner, what if any action do we need to take or do we just need to note it?
Um. Well, okay, so. Looking at the charter and all the things that I looked at, uh. It's, it does seem that somewhere, and I, and I'm not sure why, and I have no idea what it. What it's about, but, um, that they do like the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at these. All sorts of things, these things included, so. I don't think it's gonna harm you to talk about it. I have, I have drafted something for you. Something's happening to my computer right now, which is very strange, but, um. All, all I wanna say is that the stat, the statute, the eight dash twenty-four statute specifically excludes, um. Maintenance and repair of existing buildings. They, they don't have to come before P and C, so. I had written up Nancy. Do you know where my? I wrote up a, a memo on that. I don't see it up here, though. Are you still there, Nancy? Did we lose her?
Yeah, uh, hold on one second, Juliette. Um, let's see. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, no, that should have been on the agenda, the roof replacement. I didn't see a memo, though, yeah.
I, it's right here.
Okay, good.
Can you guys see that? Can the commission member see that?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So basically I just said it's a referral. So basically, I just said it's a referral, it should be noted that it's not required, but, um, you could, you. If you want to just do it anyway, and I'll, I'll figure out how to. I didn't have time to talk to anybody and I just felt it was safer just to keep it in. Uh, but I, I have a motion there if you. Want to entertain it. I, I did find that it was, uh, consistent with the P O C D, uh, because that specifically states in one of their goals that community facilities should be. Preserved. Or maintained. But I can't make.
Do we have anyone here from town council to? Talk about that?
Naomi's here, but.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If the roof needs to be fixed, the roof needs to be fixed.
That's, I agree.
So, I move in favor of supporting the roof fixing.
I second it.
The reason these two ended up coming down was they weren't in the current capital plan for this year, so. When they go to the bond console, he wants to know where did this come from? The short way around it is you send it back to the planning commission who has to review the capital plan.
I don't know why you have to do that either.
I don't either. They, they put it in the charter.
And I agree for economy of scale, why would we spend more money next year if we can get it done this year for less?
Yeah, it'd always cost more next year.
Yeah.
And I believe we have a motion by Mr. Brodrow and a, a second by, uh, by Mr. White Scarver, is that correct?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, um, Katie Scanlon?
Yes.
Tom Boudreaux?
Yes.
Paul White Harbor?
Yes.
Jim Arak?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, it is unanimous five zero. Approval of minutes.
Mister, Mister Chairman, could I get you to backtrack just a little bit?
Sure.
And add a effective date to the. Regulation amendment.
Ooh.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
And I'll be honest, Eric told me about it. I didn't remember either.
Okay.
I didn't either. Thank you, Eric.
I, thank you, thank you, Eric. Um.
So that, that. Uh. The, uh, just stated out loud that the, the regulation amendment change will be effective the day after publication, I believe it is.
We have to have a period of, um.
Unmute yourself, Eric, what?
Uh, February twenty-eighth, when the ordinance, day after the ordinance expires.
Yep, I was gonna say.
Oh, you want it that late, okay.
Well, then it doesn't have any conflict with it.
No. So we're, uh, we're, we're treating that as friendly, my, uh, retro actively to put the, uh, effective days, February twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two.
Yeah.
I certainly agree.
Everybody, okay, well, I don't, I don't think we need to vote on that. It's a, it's just a friendly change. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Thank you, all right. We'll move on now, I think, to the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of nine December twenty-twenty-one? Somebody make, all right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of nine December twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second.
So I got.
I've got several seconds, any discussion? Um, Katie?
Yes.
Um.
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Jim, but Jim is yes, I assume. Yes, 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 I'm in favor as well. Uh, passes five zero. Uh, correspondence, uh, is there any?
Uh, there was just, uh, the letter of resignation from the, uh, Nate Woody.
All right, thank you. Uh, reports, uh, the housing plan contract is first, Julia.
Um, I just had, uh, included that for you, so just to let you know that we did contract with, um. Type Planning and Policy Group, uh, somebody I'm familiar with, actually. Through Casio and, uh, CCAPA, so I will be getting in touch with them this week. Uh, to get started on this, uh, they're great planners, the two, these guys, John Guskowski. Um. But I don't have any more detail with you, uh, other than that, they were the only ones who responded, oddly, not even the Council of Government, so.
Great.
But they're, uh, they're a great company, so. They'll give us a good product. They've done quite a few of these in the region and I, I just did one myself with North Stonington, so. Um, and then I'll, I'll make it brief because it's ten o'clock and I want to go to bed.
I don't blame you, so do I.
Uh, just important, I'm going to skip to the end, uh, so we did, um. Right under the wire, we did manage to complete the Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant. Um, for half of the funding for the sewer extension project. Uh, we had about three days to write that entire grant. It was a little stressful. But it is done and submitted, hopefully tonight. Um, I'm working on the annual report, the GIS updates, again, are still continuing. I haven't gotten in front of the. Finance committee to ask for, uh, whatever I'm supposed to ask for, a bid waiver, so we can just continue with Klaus. Until we're all caught up. With the, you know, this first round, initial round of, uh, updates that I consider to be kind of an emergency. Um. And I'm preparing your, everybody's budget at the, this time, uh, our intern is working out quite well, I've. I'm, I'm probably abused him a little this month. To help, uh, with the annual report and, um, he did a nice inventory of all the commercial properties and. Uh, he also, uh, took on the painful task along with Nancy. To identify all of the outdated documents and references on the town website. For the Landy's Department, and there were a lot of them, so I know that was not a fun task, so. My thanks, and now we're all, uh, we're also working on an update to people forums, so all of this is, it, what we're trying to do is streamline the process. And make everybody's jobs as easy as possible in that respect in the Landy's Department, since we are not fully staffed. And we have another, um, Landy's assistant who will be retiring shortly as well, so. Um, it's, it's been challenging. Um. And that's the most important ones there. For me, and I'll turn it over to, uh. Mike?
Russell. Much report?
Yeah, back of the truck is filled with signs that were found in various places that they shouldn't have been. Uh. Thrust has been on blight, uh, closing out, uh. Things where we had written a letter saying they were in violation, but I had no record that anybody had gone back to look and that they'd done anything. Found some of them had been cleared, found some that were worse than we first cited them, uh, so cleared that up. Um. Enforcement actions mostly, uh, mostly blight, the, the, the thirty-nine Berry Drive, uh. The attorney is working on, uh, a court case to, uh, try and bring him into compliance. That's in addition with no permits or building permits or inspections. Um. First for me, so. Uh, you'll notice the zoning permit applications now are more accessory uses where. I think the last couple of reports you got showed a lot of new single-family homes. Uh. The completion inspections are, are down. Uh, we got about three of them, but what I have noticed is a lot of these subdivisions that we approved. Flatbrook, uh, uh, Quakertown Meadows, where the lots are filling up rapidly. Um. Major builder, builders finished, uh, Bellows Drive. And people are now looking at some of the old subdivisions that had lots in them, Chidley Way. Um, Abbey Road. Uh. That's the one on one seventeen, not Chriswood, Sable Woods had some open lots. So I would anticipate on your planning side. That our developers are probably out looking for other parcels that they can, uh. Subdivide.
I've had some rumors of some, but I, I, I've. Uh, this, uh, chart in my report is, is the. For the year twenty-twenty-one, the calendar year, not the fiscal year, just if. Since Mike was, uh, talking about the number of permits and whatnot, so you had thirty-six houses over the last year. That were approved.
Is our fiscal year July?
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on your annual report now, which will go over the fiscal year twenty, twenty, twenty-one, but. I like to do a calendar year-end summary as well.
That's all I've got, unless somebody has some, uh, questions. Lot of inquiries on, on people wanting to do additions and problems, uh. And, uh, flood plains and along CAM boundaries, so, uh. I've, I've. You know, gone out and looked at some inspections and, uh, those will be coming your way in the future, I think. That's about it.
Thank you, Mike. Is there any other business to come before the commission tonight? If not, um, our next meeting is February tenth, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, seeing there is no more business, we are adjourned. Thank you all for your assistance tonight, uh. I will struggle through. I think I will get better as this, at this as we go along, I hope. So thank you all for your help and, uh, see everybody.
Tony, that, that was not your fault. I sh- I should have, um, you know, had a, the staff motion.
You did a good job, Tony. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, folks. Good night, everyone. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Tony, you'll find you can't get fired.
Yeah.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Fun. I miss y'all. I have a good, I hope you have a great night.
Hi, Hillary.
Hi.
Bye.
Um. Nancy, are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, have a good weekend.
Thank you, too.
I'm gonna shut it down over here.
Yeah.